Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, September 6th Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven PM Citizens Input, seven oh five Public Hearing, Ed Sheeran Concert at Gillette Stadium, September fourteenth and fifteenth. Seven twenty NRC, Napaunsa Reservoir, LSP. Seven thirty-five Board of Selectmen Review, Possible Vote on Special Town Meeting Warrant Articles. It looks like about eleven articles. And then eight o'clock, if all goes well, we'll sign the special town meeting warrant. Eight ten Selectmen's Update, eight fifteen Town Manager's Update, eight twenty Assistant Town Manager's Update, and then we have some action items.
Just to let you know, I think we're officially down to eight articles now.
Eight, okay.
So we've had three that disappeared.
All right, can everybody stand? I'll lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Thank you. Seven o'clock, anybody here for Citizens Input? Manny?
My name is Manny Lee. I am the Director of the Boyd and Library, and I'm here to promote a series of events for the month of September. This will be the Second Annual Spiny Speaker Series. And first off, I want to say that this series wouldn't happen without the generosity of John Spiny and the entire Spiny family. Now, last year was the first series, and we focused on a particular theme. Last year it was space exploration, and we had Dr. Natalia Holt, who authored Rise of the Rocket Girls. She came and spoke about her book at the library. This year, our theme will be folklore/fairy tales. And if I may, just for a brief few minutes, just explain some of the programs, and then which leads up to the gala, which will be on September the twenty-sixth. So our first program will be New England Folklore, and that's going to be held at the library on September the thirteenth at seven o'clock with historian Michael Gerard. And he's going to talk about various sunken treasures, pirates, strange creatures of New England. That's going to be at seven o'clock at the library. Down the fifteenth, we have something actually pretty interesting, and that one's going to be held at the Marilyn Rodman Center. We're actually going to be showing the movie The Wizard of Oz, but it's going to be a sing-along. So we encourage the audience to come, and while the movie's playing on the big screen, sing along with all the tunes of Wizard of Oz. Tickets are absolutely free, so it is free of charge. It's on Saturday, September the fifteenth at one o'clock. We look forward to it. I think it's going to be great. This is sponsored by the Friends of Boyd and Library, who are just a tremendous group of volunteers that do so much, book sales, one of them, raffles, and all the proceeds go to library programs. They are a, just a great bunch of people that are dedicated to the library. Again, this is absolutely free, and the other fun part about it is the Inspiration Performing Troupe, which is a local theater company. They performed Founder's Day. They're going to be onstage not only singing the songs, but then also reenacting what's going on the movie screen, kind of like Rocky Horror Picture Show type of thing. And they're going to be dressed up in costumes, so it should be a fun time. Again, that's on the fifteenth at the Rodman Center. Then on the twenty-second, we have a children's program. This will be held at the library. This will be at three o'clock. This is titled Pretty as a Princess, and there will be four princesses at the library. It's going to be Belle, Rapunzel, Cinderella, and it's either Snow White or Tinkerbell. They're going to be at the library. They're going to tell stories, they're going to sing songs, and then all the kids in the audience and adults, if they want, want to take pictures with them, they will afterwards. So that's going to be on Saturday, the twenty-second of September, and that's at three o'clock, and it's absolutely free. All our programs are free of charge. And that leads up to our gala, which will be on September the twenty-sixth. That's a Wednesday night. And at seven o'clock, New York Times bestselling author Gregory Maguire, who wrote Wicked, which is based on the musical, which is the sixth longest musical in history. He is going to be at the library. Now, before Gregory speaks, there is going to be, and you have him in front of you, a VIP reception, which will include food, drink, and meeting author Gregory Maguire. So he will be there. He will speak at seven, and then after that, he'll entertain any questions from the audience. And following that, we have an unlikely story, which is the bookstore in Plainville owned by Jeff Kenny. The bookstore is going to be there selling various books of Gregory's, and Gregory will be signing them and taking pictures. And again, this is, this is all free of charge. The books do cost money. The unlikely bookstore is going to be handling all the transactions, and that'll be at the Rodman Center. I do want to acknowledge Bob Hickey and everything that he's done at the Rodman Center. I think we've established a very good relationship with Bob, and we'll continue to do other programs in the future. So I just want to say, I have seen Gregory Maguire before at a, at a library conference, and he's tremendous. I can guarantee you, if you go that evening, you're going to be laughing, you're going to be full of smiles, because he's very entertaining, and he is certainly not boring. He is hysterical, he's a terrific storyteller. So I encourage everyone, I encourage the citizens of Foxborough, if you want to enjoy a fun night out. It's September the twenty-sixth. Again, tickets are free of charge, and Gregory will be onstage at seven o'clock. And if you have any questions, you can call the library at five zero eight five four three one two four five, and tickets are available at the library, at the adult circulation desk, and also at the Rodman Center.
Thank you. I'm impressed that you didn't read a single thing after that, and that was really well-done.
Yeah. A lot of rehearsing.
Thanks, a lot of good programs going on there.
Great stuff.
Thank you.
Great job, Manny. Thank you.
Anybody else here for Citizens Input? Seeing none of the seven oh five public hearings. You want to read that, dear?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one, and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter two twenty-nine, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, September sixth, two thousand and eighteen, beginning at seven oh five PM at the Foxborough High School Media Center, one twenty South Street, Foxborough, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC, Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC, for Ed Sheeran two thousand and eighteen tour. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Good evening.
Jesse, you know, it's with Gillette Stadium.
George Bell, Stadium Advisor, committee.
Here before you this evening to just walk through the details of our two Ed Sheeran shows next week, September fourteenth and fifteenth, a Friday and a Saturday. The parking lot open time will be three o'clock, the gates at five-thirty, and the event start time is at seven. We don't have any need, we're not concerned about the event running late or going past the town hall view of eleven fifteen. You might remember, we hosted Ed Sheeran's first-ever NFL stadium show in two thousand and fifteen, and it was, it was a huge success. It's great that he's back with two shows now. It's nice to see an artist as young as he is, with as much potential as he has, choose Gillette Stadium as the place to kind of, as a touchstone in the market to return, and we, he's with the same management team as Kenny Chesney and as Taylor Swift. So it's nice that we've got that rapport, and we continue to build that relationship. From a demographic standpoint, this is a really mixed bag in the best way possible. It's not uncommon for us to see at an end Sheeran show here in fifteen, and when we've gone to them in other markets, three generations at the same show. His music is transcendent, it's absolutely everywhere. You can't go to a wedding without hearing it. And so we see, we see a lot of dates, and we see a lot of families. So to that end, in two thousand and fifteen, we didn't have any behavioral issues. We certainly don't anticipate them this time around. We're ready for, you know, we'll have our standard complement of security procedures. We'll communicate to everybody prior to the event via email. We've obviously already been in close communication with both police and fire, so everybody's comfortable and on the same page. This is our seventh and eighth show of the summer, and so we're closing it out. Hopefully, it'll be safe and successful, and we'll be on to two thousand and nineteen.
George, anything?
No, we don't anticipate noise issues, but we do have people that will be in attendance. The, we did have, the in-house promoter is Gillette, which is a craft group, which is excellent, and Al Daudley has brought along, is tutoring his daughter to take the sound management, I'm going to say, with him. The one issue that we have run into that the stadium is going, is working with the Board of Health on is just the increased portable sanitary facilities. Basically, the state, the field itself with the twelve thousand, right, up to twelve thousand?
Little bit less, I think it's like ten, five, eleven thousand.
Does put a strain on the lavatory facilities, and they have continued to increase it, and so I thank you for that. I think I'll make it easier. Otherwise, we voted to recommend for you to approve it.
Anybody on the board? This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, make the motion to close the public.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion to close the public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, for discussion or vote?
Yeah, move to approve NPS LLC, Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC, event license application for Ed Sheeran concerts on September fourteenth and fifteenth.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a full lineup for two thousand and nineteen yet?
Can't tell you yet.
Looking on it.
Is Paul here yet?
We're checking on him right now.
Why don't, before we get into the town meeting stuff, let's, why don't we go through the action items?
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and August seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion on the seven twenty-four meeting minutes?
No.
Why don't we approve them separately?
Separately, you want to do it separately?
Yeah. Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from August seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Kenneth Fitzgerald in the amount of two thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve eight one-day all alcohol licenses for September ninth, September thirtieth, October fourth, October fourteenth, November fourth, December second, December twenty-third, and December thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, from ten AM to ten-thirty PM.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Under discussion, it's for Fred Smurlis, Al Pro, Tailgates, DBA, First and Goal.
Duly noted. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Keep going?
Yeah.
All right. Move to approve Veteran Services Public Event Application for the POW MIA Remembrance Ceremony on the Common, September twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, to September twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Under further discussion, is it really the eighth annual, Mike?
It is the eighth annual.
The eighth year we've done this?
Consecutively, yes.
Wow, okay, good. That's all I have. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Move to accept the gift donation of fifty dollars to the Boyd and Library from the Foxborough High School class of nineteen forty-nine, in memory of George Liliman, to be used for the Children's Department.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept gift donation of two hundred and thirty dollars to the Council on Aging Human Services from the Friends of Foxborough seniors for programs held at the senior center.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
What's the last one?
All right. All right, I just saw Paul walk in. Rick, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Take you a few minutes early, if that's all right?
Sure.
All right, so next up, update and discussion, NRC, Napaunsa Reservoir, LSP, with Paul McManus and Entourage. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
They have a little less humidity out there right now.
Yeah, it's still humid up here, though.
Yeah, and here it's, it's thick.
Yeah, just the transition a little bit. So just as an update, Paul's been diligently emailing me back and forth about a bunch of stuff, and he's drafted up a, a letter to the Board of Selectmen and to Kate, the town attorney, that would explain, it's designed to explain the situation or a few of the conditions that we are objecting to in the current situation with the reservoir and Schneider Electric. It's not the letter, or recommendation letter, or the comment letter that would go into the DEP, but it's the foundation of what would be used to create that letter. So is that a good enough introduction for you, or?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Again, that's, Rick makes a good point. Again, Paul McManus from Echo Tech. And, and as Rick said, my, my goal at this point in the process is, is, has been really to, to dig into the situation, come up with some thoughts, put them before the NRC and, and this board, and, you know, kind of get your feedback and explain to you what, what I see as, as issues. And the, the intent really is, is to provide both organizations with information that you can potentially use to submit comments, because maybe I should step back and remind folks. What's, the situation with the reservoir is that the contamination out there is regulated by the Mass Contingency Plan, or the MCP. And the MCP says that the responsible party, which in this case is Schneider Electric, their predecessor entity, and therefore them, is responsible for the contamination in the reservoir. There's, there's a number of compounds, but cadmium, metal cadmium is the primary one, so we'll talk, focus on, on that. So the MCP has a process whereby it's, they're required to go and assess what's there physically in, in the sediment, in this case, in the surface water. And then the, the global requirement in the MCP is that every contamination site has to be assessed and, and dealt with to ensure that it does a couple things. The situation, they can't, can't walk away from a situation until there's no significant risk to human health, safety, public welfare, and the environment. In addition to that, so there's, there's, there's the no significant risk component, and there's, again, there's four pieces to no significant risk. In addition to that, every site is required to clean up to background condition where feasible. So in other words, in, in, in every situation, if it's cleaned up such that it really doesn't cause any harm, any significant risk of harm, even once a responsible party reaches that point, they're required to, to basically clean it all up, clean it back up to the condition that would exist in the absence of that event or series of events. But there's a catch to that, in that it's to the extent feasible. And the MCP regulations define feasibility to include all sorts of things. It's, it's technical feasibility, it's logistics feasibility, it's legal feasibility, and, and it's also financial feasibility. But one of the provisions in there that, that we'll, we'll talk about, that, that they're invoking, is, is regulatory feasibility. So the bare minimum standard is, again, to be protective, no significant risk to human health, safety and welfare, safety, public welfare, and the environment. So Woodren Curran is Schneider Electric's technical consultant, has been for a long time. They've put forth a draft so-called permanent solution statement, which is just what it sounds like. It's a, it's a analysis by them, and most importantly, a conclusion that the situation as it exists out there represents no significant risk in all those different categories. So my, my focus really in, in looking at this has not been one of, of human health. I'm not a human health, you know, risk assessor, and that's not really my expertise. I'm really thinking about, for the most part, the other components of it, primarily environmental health, but also, as we'll talk about in a minute, the issue of public welfare. So what, one of the interesting things that's come out in, in the past five years, Woodren Curran and Schneider Electric have been working under a so-called temporary solution, where they submitted documentation that basically said the situation out there is stable, we can't quite close out the site yet, so we want a, you know, kind of a temporary status. And during that five years, they are supposed to do further assessment, and also, the interesting thing is, is enterprising steps towards closure. Well, they haven't really done any enterprising steps towards closure, but they have done, they have done monitoring. During that period, one of the, the primary things that came out of that is that they reached a conclusion that what's going on out there is this cadmium, as you know, came, came out from the industrial facility, discharged into the reservoir for many years. The cadmium then settled into the sediment. As a result of that, it's contaminated the sediment and also the overlying surface water. What Woodren Curran has concluded is that what happens out there on an annual basis is due to the sediment chemistry that, that happens and changes over the course of a year, with temperature changes in the water, et cetera, that during the winter, more of that cadmium tends to end up in the water column, and then during the summer months, when the water gets warm and the chemistry changes a little bit, it tends to drop out into, into, into the sediment. Obviously, that's not a hundred percent, but that's a general pattern. It's winter, more in the water, and then when the water warms up, more drops out in the spring. One of the things that they've concluded is that in the past five years, and to a certain degree in preceding years, since, since this discharge of cadmium has ceased, there's less total cadmium in the sediment and the surface water, which of course raises the question, where did it go? There's only one place that it could have gone, which is downstream into the Napaunsa River. And this is, this is a conclusion that, that they don't actually reach, I suspect they really don't want to say those words, but cadmium, as you probably know, is an element. It can't break down into anything else. It's, it's there, it's a primary element on the periodic table. So if there's less of it in the reservoir, it didn't break down, the only option for it is that it went downstream. Okay? So that's something, something really to keep in mind. So in terms of, in terms of what I've done and, and what I've laid out, is, and what I just described is, is what's referred to as the conceptual site model. And a conceptual site model is, is a part of, of all of these things, and it's really a useful thing, because it, it forces the investigators and then allows the readers to understand, this is what we think is really going on in the site. This is how material got there, this is where it is, this is what it's doing, this is where it's going. So they've laid out their conceptual site model. I've actually printed it in its entirety in my, in my letter. It's less than a page long, it's not especially complex, and I urge you to actually read it and, and understand it. So another finding that they've made that, that is, is really interesting, is they, they said that since the cadmium discharge has ceased, which was in nineteen eighty-eight, so, so thirty years ago, they calculate that seven to ten inches of new sediment has been deposited in the reservoir. What that means is that every three to four years, based on their calculations, every three to four years, there's an inch of new sediment, and that the reservoir is, is getting an inch more shallow every three to four years. That's a really high deposition rate. And, and it, it makes me wonder, but, but I, I don't have any evidence to the contrary. And it's important here, because ordinarily, one would expect that, okay, if you're getting an inch of new sediment every three to four years, and this ceased thirty years ago, that the contamination would then be buried. But their conceptual site model is, as I just described, essentially, if, if the mechanism that they described is really there, that's, that's keeping that cadmium from being buried. That's important, because the reservoir is, according to their model, the reservoir is getting more shallow all the time, and the cadmium is staying in that, those top sediments. Because it's more shallow, it's more susceptible to re-suspension with boat traffic, it continues to be accessible to human and environmental receptors, and, and in reality, it's, it's, you know, more and more, exposure is more and more possible as the reservoir gets more shallow. So that's an important, important consideration. So as I said, one of the, one of the, one of the requirements of the MCP is to, is that they demonstrate no significant risk to public welfare. And public welfare is, is really just what it sounds like. And the MCP says that public welfare has two purposes for, for this evaluation. Identify nuisance conditions, which may be localized, and significant community effects. And then in terms of, in terms of those issues, I lost my train of thought, sorry. Consider such factors as nuisance conditions, loss of active or passive property use, and any non-picuniary effects not otherwise considered. So, and it, and it also has to consider not just current activities, but reasonably foreseeable activities. So in my view, the, the issue of, of public welfare is, is really one that, that I think the town and this organization should focus on. It's, it's interesting in that, in the MCP, the entire, there are, there are many, many, many pages, and follow-up DEP documentation dedicated to human health risk assessment and ecological risk assessment. There's one page in, in hundreds of pages of regulations dedicated to the issue of public welfare. But I think it's important here. This is an unusual situation. Public welfare is very often something on contamin, cleaning up contaminated sites. If there's a tank leak, contamination goes in the ground, they clean it up, maybe there's some residual contamination, but it's not a public welfare issue. It's maybe a human health issue that they get their arms around. It's probably not, in most cases, with a tank leak of petroleum, not an ecological issue. But in this case, I think public welfare is, is really a concern, and frankly, I don't think that this site has no, no significant risk to public welfare. Because, you know, they talk about having two hundred and ninety acres of site sediment estimated to contain cadmium within the top six inches. And looking at their data, it's clear that much of that cadmium is at concentrations that if it were detected in the soil, in an industrial area, this is not even a residential setting, in an industrial area, many of their results would trigger reporting, were it found in the soil in an industrial area. So the, the, the point being that these are not de minimis concentrations that they're walking away from. These are concentrations that if they were detected in the middle of an expansive factory area, in the soil... area, in the soil, they would trigger an MCP obligation. So, again, not de minimis. These are real concentrations for many of them.
Would that obligation, if it were that, be to totally clean and remove it from a site?
If these concentrations were found on an industrial site,
Yeah.
It would trigger, it would force entry into this process whereby there would be a requirement to assess it, assess the risk, and then assess the feasibility of cleaning up to background. So, if there were significant risk associated with that in whatever the scenario happened to be, because risk is always site-specific, you know, the exposure is site-specific. So, but these would certainly be above background levels. So, were feasible, they would have to be cleaned up. They would absolutely have to be assessed, absolutely have to meet no significant risk, and then have to be cleaned up to background unless it were infeasible for some reason. So, again, real concentrations. The reservoir is shallow, dredging has been contemplated in the past. There was a committee of experts that looked at, you know, the ways to handle the nuisance vegetation in the reservoir. They talked and recommended localized dredging for a couple of different reasons and a couple of different scenarios. Dealing with contaminated sediments to this degree in a dredging project, in my opinion, is a community impact. It's a nuisance condition. If you look at the language for a risk to public welfare, I believe there's several places where you can check off and say, "Yes, it would trigger that threshold." So, again, I think that a risk to public welfare is proposed to remain, and therefore, in my view, their closure statement, their permanent solution statement fails to meet the required standard. So, as I said, there's also a requirement to approach or achieve background where feasible. And the approach part is part of the language, because as you can imagine, if you have contamination, you know, getting that last minute little bit becomes very difficult and very expensive. So, oftentimes, in feasibility evaluations, it's determined that it's feasible to get, you know, to a certain concentration, and you get the bulk of the material, but that last little bit is infeasible. And that's, you know, that's often the reality and the way these things get closed out. So, they're required to do a feasibility evaluation, which they did. It's extremely concise, it's very brief, but it leans on one issue. The feasibility, as I said, the feasibility evaluation can include, can and should include, regulatory considerations. So, they put in their feasibility evaluation, and they anchor their entire feasibility evaluation on some language from the Massachusetts wetland regulations. Those regulations include special provisions for cleaning up sites under the MCP. There are so-called limited project provisions, and there are a number of limited project provisions, and they, for the most part, relate to situations where there's kind of an overriding public purpose. You know, there's one for landfill closure, there's one for, you know, highway safety improvements. And they're basically regulations, there are exceptions that are written into the regulations to allow projects to proceed that otherwise couldn't comply with the regulations, but the DEP who wrote these regs allowed these things to go forward, as I said, for kind of a higher public purpose. So, as you can imagine, there are certain circumstances where cleaning up a contaminated site requires one to go and essentially beat up a wetland in one form or another to clean up the site, and the beating up that wetland would not ordinarily be allowed, but it is under these circumstances. So, those regulations, that so-called limited project for MCP cleanups says that one can't invoke this provision and clean up beyond the level required for no significant risk. In other words, if you're breaking the wetland rules to do your cleanup, you can do that to the degree that's necessary to achieve no significant risk, but not to go and get to background. And if you think about that, it makes some sense, because it's basically saying, "Okay, you've gotten what really needs to be cleaned up. Getting to background, we consider to be too much collateral damage to a sensitive resource, namely the wetland." So, that's the provision that they invoke for saying, "It's not feasible for us to clean up to background because we can't do that, we can't violate that provision of the wetland regulations and thereby violate those regulations." In my view, it's totally inappropriate to invoke that standard, because the reservoir itself and all the sediment, all the land underwater is the wetland resource designation, is a protected resource, but dredging would be allowed. Dredging is allowed under those regulations. They don't need that limited project provision. So, it's inappropriate, in my view, to say, "We can't go beyond the minimum here because we're not allowed to," when in fact, one is allowed to dredge. Dredge permits get issued. I've gotten a couple of them myself in the past six months for projects, you know, not related to this, this is people wanting to dredge for various reasons. So, it is allowed. They're inappropriately leaning on a limit that's written for a different scenario. So, I think, to summarize, I think that they fail to meet the standard to protect public welfare, and they fail to meet the standard to clean up to background because they're relying inappropriately on a limit that doesn't apply. And I think these are two, you know, really substantive criticisms of this report. I think they're using, you know, their reliance on each of them allows them to go and say, "We're done. That's all we can do, that's A, that's all we need to do, and B, that's all we are allowed to do." And I think neither is correct.
The fact that they purposely did not include future dredging projects in their risk analysis, back in 2002, this Blue Ribbon Committee spelled right out that they recommended that as sedimentation continued, that it's part of most reservoirs to keep them usable, will require some limited dredging in certain areas. But that was totally overlooked. And when I raised the issue at the public information session, they said, "Oh, well, we looked at dredging for the purpose of remediation of the whole reservoir, and that was not feasible because we couldn't guarantee that we'd get all the contamination." And I said, "No, this is a different kind of dredging, this is for a different purpose, but it's still the same sediments with the same problem, with the heavy metals in there." And I've talked to three different dredging contractors, and they all say immediately that to get the permits, even the permits to do it, not only the implementation, but just getting the permits, is going to require more testing, more documentation, more analysis because of the heavy metals being present. So, we have to do substantially more work just to even get the permits. But these types of permits are being issued all over the state, and other people are doing it. Woodward and Curran doesn't do dredging. They're not really a company that has specialized in this. So, I think that they saw more risks associated with proceeding with this than other companies might. But it's definitely a process that's going on elsewhere, and if we want a reservoir that we want to continue having as a resource and being able to fish out there and boat out there and enjoy the wildlife around it, we need to be able to do this.
And the other thing, I guess I didn't say, is because of the levels of contamination, and I described, you know, kind of the perspective on what those levels are, because of that, managing any dredge spoils, any material that were to come out, will be very problematic. Be very problematic, it will be very expensive, you know, there will be very limited options as to what someone can do with those dredge spoils. Clean dredge foils from a pond, I'm doing a project on golf course dredging out ponds, their spoils are clean, they're going to take those, they're organic-rich material, and they're going to take them, they're going to dry them out, and they're going to make topsoil and use it on the golf course. You can't do that with this material. You absolutely cannot do that with this material. And that's an impact to public welfare, in my view. It's a nuisance, it's an impact to public welfare.
So, Paul, these are the findings of Woodward and Curran in terms of their final report, the closeout report. And this report is going to be made to DEP, I assume, correct?
That's correct. It's submitted right now, it's submitted as a draft for public comment. The public comment period of the town was successful in getting the public comment period extended. So, we're in the public comment period of that draft.
Okay. All right. So, in your view, and you've had experience in this area before, what's DEP's evaluation of these types of situations, and what kind of actions should we expect from them?
This site receives more attention from DEP than many. The way the MCP process works in general is that there's a licensed site professional, which is a certification issued by a border registration in Massachusetts, I'm a licensed site professional, or LSP. Woodward and Curran's LSP will ultimately sign and stamp and render an LSP opinion on this process. Ordinarily, DEP does not necessarily even review those submittals. The process some years ago was privatized, basically to get it moving, because the whole cleanup and assessment process wasn't moving. So, they privatized the situation, they put the onus on the LSPs, and there are about 500 LSPs in the state. And, but in this case, because of the public involvement provisions that exist, in this case, DEP is looking at it, they've been more involved than normal. But having said that, I think it's imperative that the town do what it can to make sure DEP looks at this. Because it's not a situation, it's not a situation, it's not a normal permitting situation where there's an issuing authority, one puts their application in there, they review it, and they give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down, or potentially a thumbs up with conditions. It's somewhat unusual in that situation. So, I think it's incumbent on the town to not only make comments, but to do what you can through perhaps your legislators to get DEP's focus on it. So, it's a good point that you raise.
With that privatization you were talking about, so if Woodward and Curran's LSP stamps this, have they stamped this report when they submitted it?
I don't think as a draft, I don't think it's actually signed and stamped, because it's submitted, right now, it's still a draft.
So, when they do submit it, are they liable, Woodward and Curran, or whoever with the LSP, if anything were to ever happen?
Well, I would say they're liable for negligence. I think in reality, you know, this process has within it, you know, a lot of discretion and interpretation. Certainly, if they submitted something that was knowingly false, you know, my assumption is that's not the case, of course. So, if, I don't see where in this situation, I don't see where they would have real liability in the typical setting.
Okay. And you had said that you are working on the letter to us, is that done, or when will we see?
We forwarded it to, let's see, to Mark Elfman,
Okay.
and also to Kathleen O'Connor, both.
Kate Connelly.
Yeah, thanks, Kate. And so, both of them got that yesterday.
Okay.
And as you read it, you know, it's, I have a draft, it's, the writing is not the best, I was really focused on kind of getting the ideas down and laying out, and I do include it in a series of kind of acronyms and definitions that I hope will be helpful. And again, as Rick said, it's really a document intended to explain my thoughts and views internally. A lot of that would obviously get rolled into a comment letter, but it's not structured that way at this time.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. So, our next steps, get a hold of that letter, look at it, Kate's opinion on it.
Right.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Just a couple. Paul, thank you for bringing it down to a level we can understand.
Yeah, I totally understood this tonight. Better than the science fair.
Thank you, man. The volunteers at NRC for bringing this forward. So, the draft permanent closure statement letter went in, and the initial deadline was the beginning of September, a couple of days ago. We extended it till the beginning of November. So, within those two months, what you've sent to Selectman Elfman and the attorney is kind of the executive summary of if you were to move forward, these are the bullet points that you're going to expand on
Basically, yes.
in the letter. So, that letter is going to represent the town that gets submitted over to the DEP. Are there any more public sessions scheduled after that last one at Snyder? Was the only one we're expecting?
It's the only one.
Okay.
And if I can interrupt, one of the things that I would ask you folks to think about is how, Rick and I talked briefly about going and formulating a comment letter. And I would encourage the select board and NRC to, I think separately, submit your comment letters. Now, one way to do that is if I wrote up kind of my general findings addressed to both that you could then reference. I guess I'm not really sure exactly what would be the most effective way, and maybe this is a good question for Kate Connelly, for me to formalize what I've written. So, I guess I would ask you to think about that and think about what would be most useful to you. And as I said, you know, maybe reach out directly to Kate and see that. But I have, you know, I've certainly agreed to work with Rick and the reservoir group to, you know, to work through that in whatever precise form it takes.
Okay. We'll be preparing a comment letter if the Board of Selectmen want to use that or incorporate that or use any parts of that, you're welcome to do that into your letter, and we'll share that with you before, well before we send it out. And we'll be looking for Kate's input as well.
So, what you're going to see from Paul, it's really, it's chunked out very nicely in order for us to just pick and choose what we want. So, we're going to do that, hopefully we'll do that, and then, because right now, it's the explanation, he did the overview now, and you'll see more details in the explanation of what he just told you. So, I think that'll really help with understanding.
Mr. Chairman, my sense of a response from the board would be to call out the questions and the differences between the findings, your findings versus their findings, and then say, you know, ask the DEP to really focus their attention on these. Why is there such differences between opinions on this? How can we get to that, how can we close that gap? Is there other remedial measures that should be, that have been overlooked here that should be considered before a final closure is? here, that should be considered before a final closure is, is, is recommended in this case?
One of the things that did come up in the last meeting here was that Kate said that she had been in touch with the DEP, and that they had offered to set up a meeting time for you folks, or a combination of both groups to come in and meet with them. That, that may have some usefulness, you know, in this whole process. It definitely would get us more feedback from them as to why they think, what, you know, that, the feedback I've had so far is they think that this site's ready for closure. And there's a lot of things we think that have not been considered, and so I don't know how they're going to respond to that, so.
So they, you're absolutely correct. In fact, Kate did reach out to me within the past few days to say, you know, they're looking at a date, maybe, maybe as early as next week to try and get a meeting together. So I was going to mention that to the board tonight, actually. So I'll frame that up with her and then let everybody know. So we, I wouldn't imagine that the whole board would attend that meeting like that. I would think probably Doc would probably go, because he's been one raising the issue before the, before the board, and is representative of your group as well, so.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
One, one comment if I can, relative to what Mr. Keegan just said. I think it's, I think it's important, if, you know, if you, if you look at my findings and you think they have merit, you know, my, my ultimate conclusion is that I believe that on at least two counts, on at least two counts, that their proposed closure fails to comply with the regulations. And, and if you agree with that, then I think it's, I think it's important for you to say that. And, and, you know, be, be on record that, you know, the, the town, you know, and the community that you represent, you know, does not think that, that this complies with the state's regulations, to be protective of your interests. Because ultimately, that's what the MCP is supposed to do. It's supposed to protect you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that, again, like Jim said, for explaining into it, so we could understand it.
All right, good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Is there any place for comment?
Um, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that.
Is it okay?
Yeah. Come on up. Just make sure you grab a microphone, state your name for the record.
My name is Neil Kaiser, Ridge Road here in Foxborough. I'm one of the original members of the Ponson Reservoir Restoration Committee back in the early 1980s. And I can't speak for anybody here at the table, but this particular group has done an excellent job. They've really gone into it, their patience is impeccable. Their studies and everything else that they've gone over is absolutely perfect for citizenship. I can't say the same for the companies. We dealt with the company originally in 1980s, before they stopped the cadmium releases and many other chemicals, zinc, copper, so on. The original discharge that the company had was into a brook, Gudgeon Brook, which flows under the company. It's just kind of a little history for you. That was originally changed later on, when the discussions had been going on about these chemicals, to the reservoir. This was all allowed by the state, and these changes were made. When you go back and you look at all the studies that have been done, one after another, year after year, the money that was spent on that could have taken that dredging system and done away with, the majority of the chemicals at the time. This is in the 80s and early 90s. What's happened now, some of the studies show that it has traveled, and I thank you very much for explaining how it's traveling. A lot of areas are a little more contaminated than others. Myself, I was always a staunch supporter of dredging, at least five feet right off the top. Nobody listened, nobody wanted to do it, everybody made excuses about it, and things like that. And if what I'm hearing here, it should have been done. It hasn't. They always make excuses, cost and everything else. And again, what they've spent on a study after study after study, it could have been done. And we wouldn't be here today, we would have the reservoir. Some of the other things that go on, you know, you, you go to meetings with them and everything else, and myself, due to frustration with the state, I did leave the association. They have picked it up and done a great job. And I hope you listen to them, I hope you support them. It took a long time for the original group of the Ponson Reservoir Restoration Committee to get the town boards on, on board with us to do this. Meeting after meeting after meeting with the town, every single board in town we approached and talked to them, discussed it with them. Gradually, one at a time, they agreed and helped support us, or them. It took a long time for that to happen. The lane property was bought because of those meetings, with a lot of help from the citizens. All these things, and this is property that this town now owns, and you can have a great use of it. Any contaminations that are in there, if they're moving, I can't see them going downriver, myself. What I see is they're in the sediment, and they're in certain locations, and it should be taken away, taken right out. And I hope that's the result of all this, I really do. And again, thank you to the board, you know, for all your help, all their work, and whatever they're doing with the lake, because it has improved. There's a lot more clarity in the water. Got to get rid of some of the loose strife and do a few other things, but that's okay. That can happen. You know, there are different things, and I'm seeing more fishermen out there later. And that's great. So, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Neil, just a question?
Yeah.
From your history?
Yeah.
I mean, off the top of my head, I could think of four boards and committees that would have a vested interest, the Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, Board of Recreation, and the Board of Health. Have you guys, you passed board in the past, this existing committee in the past, worked with those boards? And as we move forward to the DEP in the next two months to get them on board in a cohesive response with input on their uses and their expertise on this, to make it a little easier for us?
I just approached the Board of Health, because we did have a member, Paul Mullins, who was with us from the Board of Health for years, and that was wonderful, but he has since retired, and we wish him well. He was, he was wonderful. So I have approached the Board of Health, and it has been brought up at their meeting, and none of their members are interested right now in taking up this issue, which I was rather disappointed in. So, we'll see. So that's, that's one of, that is one of the boards. Conservation, we have worked with, and we do continue to work with, and they are great. They really are great. They've been very, very supportive.
And recently, I reached out to the Water Department, and they've been very supportive. They did some research for me on past investigations or testing that they had done. Also, they said that they'd try to start making or attending some of our meetings, so they could be more informed of what was going on. And they also said that they would pick up and start doing testing on the wells for cadmium. They had been relying on the, Woodward and Curran's been testing four times a year. I let them know that that, they wouldn't be coming around this year to do that, and that, that the Water Department manager said that he would take care of making sure that, that it was added to the testing program.
So, so moving forward up, up until the beginning of November, from the town administration respective, could we do an effort to get some unification to the different boards and committees? And I didn't even think of the Water Department, but I remember going to one of the meetings about four or five years ago, when they talked about that well. But if you're, if Paul's talking about the health and the welfare and the benefits, and I mean, you've got past usage of the reservoir, we certainly get existing use, we've got a boat launch that's being permitted right now, we've got existing launch, we've got the lane property.
There's actually four, four town wells are actually within the capture zone that overlaps into the reservoir.
Yep.
So there's four, actually four wells that could be impacted by.
So, so there's a way to get the breadth of that in one unified letter, under council letterhead, in cohesive steps with what the LSP is saying? I think that is a lot to do in two short months, but I think that's a good shot to get their attention.
Yeah, good point. Thanks, Neil.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. 7:35. Board of Selectmen review possible vote on special town meeting warrant articles. How do you want to do this, Bill?
All right, so I, what we have, Mr. Chairman, is that we have all the advocates for the various articles are here tonight to speak to them. So we'll just go to them by, in order, as presented.
All right, Chief, you want to come up and talk firetruck?
Just to let you know, it appears that Articles 7, 8, and 9 are not going to go forward at this time, so, so we'll go from Article 6 right on to Article 10, which will be the Borough School, right after that, at that point.
All right. So you?
Questions in regards to the great positive outcome that Deputy Chief Kelleher presented to you guys already, in regards to this wonderful opportunity for us to replace our 1994 ladder truck with a 95% from the federal government and 5% for us for the truck, then we still have to buy the equipment. But again, it's, you know, this truck is coming up, I think, close to 25 years. We had done a big refurbish on it about four or five years ago, hoping to get eight to 10 more additional years of life out of it. And I've always encouraged my guys to go after any federal and state grants, and we were very, very successful from the hard work that both Deputy Chief Kelleher and Lieutenant Andrew Patini put forth in the writing of that grant. And it's, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to get $810,000 that we never have to replace or pay back to replace this close to a million dollar piece of equipment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just to point a clarification, that the, the federal government is going to provide us effectively 95% of the cost of the vehicle itself.
Exactly.
Right, so not to be confused with the fact that the total cost of the appropriation for this that's being asked for is, is over 100, 1 million dollars, right?
It's close. We're still working with a few different vendors to get the best product for the town. We've, we've already determined that we're not going to go after a tower truck, a lot of folks were talking about that because of Gillette Stadium. We have so many communities around us that already have tower trucks, we're going to be more diversified, we're going to stay with a stick style aero device, but we are going to put a pump, with a pre-pipe waterway, and make it more like a quint, so it's more diversified, gives us better coverage for our community.
And so that, the, the total cost of offering the vehicle is, brings the cost up to just about a million dollars in terms of.
Shy, it's shy down below that, so.
And the fund, so, so the purpose of the article is to, is to request an appropriation. The money will come in from the federal government, and the, and the additional money that'll come from the ambulance fund to, to help pay for that. So it's not hitting the taxpayers' tax, tax, tax rate at all, it's actually going to come right off the ambulance receipt. So that money has been put aside, we'd planned for this purchase for several years.
Absolutely.
And this actually helps our situation in many, many different ways. So the purpose of the article is to request the actual appropriation to purchase the vehicle and the equipment.
And to accept, accept the grant.
And to accept the grant as well.
When would, if we didn't get this grant, when would we have been in the queue to buy a new truck?
Within four to five years, it would hit the actual CIP scale that, spreadsheet that we use. And I'm sure that would have been probably when you would have saw it come under the, Randy Scollins' CIP project. It was discussed last night at AdCon, that they didn't see it on the spreadsheet, but I know that Randy's encompasses everything in the town, we have one that encompasses all of our capital footprint, so I, I've already told AdCon we'd get that to him. But we were trying to get 10 years, eight to 10 years out of that refurbishment, so that's about four years away, four to six years away.
And those costs go down each year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, I know what it takes to write grants like that, and.
I'm very proud of them.
Thank them both, but thank them again.
Absolutely. I'm extremely, extremely proud of the department, and really honestly, it's really proud of you guys supporting us on our software. I mean, it's data collection is what makes these things successful, and when you guys approved and allowed us to move forward with all of our new software three years ago, that, that's a big factor in making this happen.
All right. I have no other questions.
Just what happens with that, with that vehicle, where it does have a couple of years and we've refurbished it?
Well, the federal government is very, very clear, it has to either be scrapped or sent to another country, it cannot be sold or used in the United States. So I think they're trying to send it to Canada, maybe, but.
So does, that's under our control to do?
No, no, it's under whoever we end up giving the bid to for the new truck.
Okay.
We still do, on our side of the House, we still do very well using that truck as a bargaining, bargaining chip in the purchasing of a new firetruck, because it stays in that fire world. So our numbers are a lot higher. So, but this, in this situation, though, it can't stay in the United States, it has to leave, or be scrapped.
All right. I have no other questions. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you for your time.
All right, next Article 2, allow public employees in the military the difference between pay based salary and military pay. I would assume you're going to take this one, Michael?
I am. And the intention of this article is to, as employee, as the town of Foxborough, to provide a benefit that, that is already provided by many corporations and by many other municipalities in Massachusetts. This is a benefit that's already provided to all State of Massachusetts employees who are called up to active duty, to deployment with the Reserve Guard. But as a municipality, we have to adopt this law. So it's not automatically cast upon us, we have to adopt it. That's what this is about. Basically, what this does is it pays the delta between somebody's base municipal pay to their base military pay. So take away any overtime stipends, differentials from their town pay, and also take away any other extras on the military pay, so it's apples to apples. And if they're taking a loss when they get deployed, adopting this allows, allows us, the town, to keep their pay equal. We're just paying on top so that their base salary is the same. This is an article that I brought in front of the town in 2012. The board supported this article. The advisory committee did not recommend it, and I would say this was probably the most debated article at that time in 2012. So there was the economic side of the, of the debate, and there was the emotional side of the debate. Do we support our military? Do we spend our money? And I don't have a position on this, I'm not specifically advocating for it. What I would like to see is the townspeople take a vote on this and decide whether it would like to adopt this. The state legislator has provided this, and I think it's only fair that I bring it in front of the town to, to decide whether it wants to provide this to its employees. Currently, this benefit would affect three employees. One who is currently deployed, so would not be affected by it, by the time this takes effect, that person would be coming home. One who could possibly deploy in the future, and then one who has a very, very unlikely chance of being deployed. A Coast Guard reservist, if he was deployed, it would be a matter of weeks, not months. So the financial impact of, of adopting this is, is small. The, the estimated 10-year forecast that I've made on it is, is less than $10,000, because I know that. because I know that question's going to be asked, uh, by the AdCom and on town meeting floor, so I just want to put that out there. That's, that's an estimate. Um, to the best of my knowledge, we have three employees in town currently who this local option could impact.
So AdCom hasn't talked about this one yet?
Uh, so I was in front of the advisory committee last week and presented them information. They had some questions, and I'll be returning next Wednesday night to answer some of those questions and any others that they might have.
Okay. Um, the only other question I had on this, is any of the money reimbursable by the state?
It is not.
So it's all.
It's all, it's, it's all be out of our pocket.
Yeah, this is town.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on it? All right. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Article number three, add School Street to design review district. Hello, Paige?
So we have a couple, the planning board has a couple articles. Um, and this one came up when we were preparing the RFP for the Fire Station and Feral Home. Uh, just doing my permit review for the RFP, I noticed that School Street wasn't in the design review district. Thought that was probably an omission, but I wasn't sure. I mean, Rock Hill is, Market Street is, you know, everything, and, and School Street faces the common, and I know it's a precious, you know, part of town. So, um, the planning board has, is proposing that we add School Street to the design review district. And what the design review district is, it encompasses a bunch of streets around downtown, and it adds a layer of review. Um, it's sort of a discretionary review in the sense that it's a subcommittee of the planning board, so someone who applies for a multifamily home or a bit non-residential use would, if they applied to the planning board, they'd be referred to the design review committee. Uh, there's five members on that, and one for planning board, one from historical, and three members businesses downtown or residents. And, um, they'll review it and look at the aesthetics, and then they make a recommendation to the planning board, who has the option of, you know, following it or not. It's not a binding recommendation, but it does, you know, obviously they work quite well together, and sometimes the planning board will go more stringent, sometimes they might not, but generally I, since I've been here, I haven't seen a conflict, so. We just feel that especially in light of the redevelopment potential for the fire station that, and its location across from the common, that it would be nice to have that sort of level of review to ensure that it's going to be, have the community character that I think everybody anticipates.
Okay.
So that's the first one. Um, Article 4 is to simply replace a definition. We currently have a definition of brew pub that was approved by town meeting back in May of 2014. Um, this definition is a rewriting of it, but doesn't change the intent. It's still, if you could see, I could read it to you, is it's an establishment wherein the primary use is a restaurant, which specializes in producing craft beers in limited quantities for onsite retail sale to restaurant patrons. Other ancillary uses may include tastings and tours, as well as retail and wholesale sales of their products and related goods of all, all of which are subject to applicable statutes of the Commonwealth. The previous definition also referred to a license, and it had language such as, um, and, and you'll see it, you all got this on your board docs, but basically it just shows the old and the new definition. The old one talks about, um, let me see, the, under a farmer's brewer's statute, to produce, sell, produce and sell beer and ale at the location and whose primary business is the sale and preparation of food to be consumed on the premises, but which also produces beer and ale on the premises, of which not more than 20% of the production capacity may be sold wholesale to other establishments. Um, since 2014, I don't know how many of you all like enjoy brew pubs. It's definitely becoming an emerging trend in the area, and Massachusetts has evolved their regulations. You know, originally brew pubs were not allowed to, you know, allow people to take it off premise. They couldn't get the growlers filled, and they have all sorts of different rules. And now, um, through a lot of advocacy, from my research, it looks like a lot of advocacy on the brewery's part to kind of bring these businesses into, the laws into the reality. We're just trying to have a definition that protects this town. It remains as a restaurant, but it also, um, is general enough to defer to the Commonwealth's regulations, and that's really the goal here. Um, I know you had a presentation, um, by the craft group on this, and actually this was done totally aside from that. I didn't, I didn't even know about that at the time, but this was just something, the farmer's brewer's statute stuck out at us because that's no longer the prevailing statute. And in fact, Nick Riccio, the building commissioner, has said the uses allow, like, he wouldn't not allow a bu- a brew pub because of the reference to farmer's statute, but, because the uses, then the intent is clearly there, but cleaning things up and bringing them into current day, aligning them with current regulations seem prudent, so. And if you recall, we just changed the zoning out on Route 1, so this is part and parcel to that.
Do you have any question on that one?
Just Paige, it's, it's references in here in limited quantities, but then it goes on to say as retail and wholesales.
Mm-hmm.
Sales. What's limited quantities? If someone wants to do wholesale?
Um.
It seems like those two terms are, are different.
Right. Well, um, I, I probably should defer to council on this. This was written in cooperation with them, so I don't really have like a, I can't break down every part of this, but, um, I do have opinions from council which say that the current regulations, um, if, like the 20% that we currently have in our regulations might run afoul of our current regulations. I'd have to pull out the, um, the whole legal thing on it, but there is a concern, no one, no one else has brought it up. It was just more as a result of the AdCom meeting. Um, people were asking about that 20% and the limit, you know, the quantities, and that's where it came up. And what town council has said is, um, proposed bylaw eliminates 20% production capacity maximum to be sold at wholesale. There is no statutory limit on the amount of products made by the brewery to be sold at wholesale. The statute limits only to whom the wholesale items may be sold. The only quantitative limit in the statute states that a brewery cannot sell less than 50% of the malt beverage it produces. Therefore, if the town were to impose a 20% maximum on wholesale, then it may effectively prevent the brewery from meeting its 50% quota under the statute, and then the bylaw would be too restrictive. So I'm sort of getting into an area where I can't really, I'm guessing and speculating.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't privy to those discussions, but.
No, right.
In my mind, it's you sit down and you can, you know, you get served at the table and, and you enjoy it there, but then when they say wholesale, is it making it in the back room and putting it in a truck and selling it? Not, not that I'm objecting to either one.
Right. Um, well, that is definitely in the definition of brew pub then and now, there would be that component, um, of some production. And I guess what we're saying is it would be in line with the state requirements, not so much like our own 20% limitation. We, um, I've been trying to research, this, it's been asked by AdCom since this, um, I'm go, that they've asked where this came from, and, uh, so I've been trying to dig in the history books to see sort of who, what, where the 20% came from. Um, I've gotten to Bill Casparra, who's now says that it came from Sharon Wasson. So I'm sort of digging through, so I don't really know the, whether this was an issue or whether something came up on town meeting floor. We're still doing a little digging on that, but from what town council's saying, we might not be able to regulate that as we do now anyway.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions on that one? Okay.
And then lastly is, um, a simple street acceptance. It's for King Philip Place, part of the gables at Foxborough Green, and, um, it is subject, obviously, to Chris Gallagher's final sign off right before town meeting, but everything else has been done, and the board is prepared to recommend it subject to.
Asking you to show us.
We met on onsite last week, um, with John McCarthy and his contractor, US Payment. Um, they have a lot of grout work, grout work to do on the curbing. Um, some curb stones need to be replaced, some plow damage, um, from the last couple of years. We've given them until September 24th to complete that work. Um, we don't intend to wait until Monday, October 1st to make a decision on it, so. He has his deadline. He appears to want to get it done. We'll see if it happens. But until it gets done, there's no recommendation on it.
And the board always defers to this guy, so.
Mm-hmm.
What he said. But we'd like to, if it works out, we'd like to recommend it.
Is that all he has to do is just?
Yeah, it's minor. It's probably a day's worth of work with the right contract.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Good. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Is that you, Chris, number six?
Yeah, Roger's here too.
Revis existing zone two boundaries and WRPOD bylaw.
This is a big map. I'll try to roll it up, give you a little orientation. North is up the sheet. That's toward me.
All right. Yeah.
So, the, the green or yellow, because the green turn, the yellow turns green when you. Uh, is the primary zone, Zone 1, around the wells. The dark blue is Zone 2, and then the pink is Zone 3. So what happened is the state has, uh, used new technology in flying all over the state and redeveloping the boundaries of Zone 2. In addition to that, we are installing, uh, a new well down at, uh, Station 1, which is, if you're looking at the little map, it's the middle one of the three on this side. And we're abandoning Well 1 because it's no longer productive enough to, to take water out of. So the new one is good. It's a good well. We already tested all these. They're, we're probably going to go to contr, go up to contract pretty soon on, on installation. So all this does is brings the Zone 2s in line with the state's Zone 2 work. Um, all of the houses that are in, all of the real estate that get added to Zone 2 are grandfathered in. All the commercial sites are grandfathered in. The only thing you can do is if you have a site that has hazmat, they can't increase the quantity of hazmat that's produced on a site. So it's really not impactful to the, to the residents at all. It's transparent. And I think that was a big issue in front of the AdCom. They wanted to know how many, how many were affected, so we've done all of that. We've put together quite a, a list of all, all the residents that are going to be added to the Zone 2s.
Yeah, I think there were, there were two big questions from AdCom. Um, the first question right off the bat was, what happens if we don't adopt this change? And the answer to that is, we don't get to use the new wells. Uh, so we are, we are looking at increasing capacity with the new wells down, close to 800 gallons a minute. Um, without this change, zoning change on the Zone 2 and Zone 3, DEP will not let us use those wells. Um, the other question was, who's affected by the change? So the map you have in front of you, the orange is everybody who's getting removed from the Zone 2 and Zone 3. The blue is everybody who's getting added into it, and the purple is everybody who stays the same. They ran it before, they're going to be in it after. Um, so this, this map, and we have a spreadsheet of everybody who, who is affected here. Um, the AdCom wanted to make sure that we were going to be notifying people that are going to be added into the Zone 2 and Zone 3, just to let them know what the article is, how it changed their property. Like Roger said, everybody existing is grandfathered in. If they go to change something on their property, that's when the restrictions would kick into place.
With respect to Title 5 septic?
Yes. Yeah, that's one of the big things. You know, the, the majority of this is all residential. There's a couple of pieces, when you get down to East Belcher, um, the ice rink, and then, um, Treetex property is in the Zone 3. Um, that's really the limit of the, the light industrial.
The only other effect, Jim, is if you, if there's an area big enough left for a subdivision, which I doubt, within the new Zone 2, um, but if there is, they have to meet, uh, a maximum impervious area requirement, which the town already has, so.
Okay. Reduction of, of septic flows per bedroom, things like that, that's.
That stays the same.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, it only affects this area, not that South Foxborough. Isn't there another area down there? It does, just this one?
A little bit. You can see down at the. Uh, these are the wells that. And then we've got two well, two, two old wells that, you know, someday we might have to develop. And then way down in the corner of the town is Witch Pond.
So it's not affecting any of those?
But those.
Just, just this one you gave us?
Correct. The, what we're changing is because of the, the relocation of the well up here off of this issue.
What they could do with aerial technology.
As you said, Articles 7, 8, and 9 are probably off the table, or? They are off the table. They're off.
It's not ready yet. A number of reasons with each of the collective agreements. We remain in negotiations and fully expect them to be on spring town meeting.
Um, all right, so that brings us to Article 10 then, Borough School. That's the first week back. First week back.
Yes.
You feel the weather a little bit? You all right?
I am, yeah. Get the kids back in.
Guess what happened?
Yeah. It's a great start to the school year.
When they said.
Excellent start.
Yeah. That's good.
Just going to add a few things to your podcast. The motion itself is on the back because the article's on the front. We've referenced Article 7 based on what we received as the new, um, argument. The backside really talks about how the funding is done. The article, as well as the funding motion, have been reviewed by.
Bomb Council.
And followed by, um, the MSBA's counsel. I'm also going to hand out a letter that shows that the MSBA last Wednesday authorized this project to move forward. And the amounts of the grant, um, that we included. And finally, I can give you two things, but I'll give you the summary one if you really want the other one given to you. Um, the, there's a budget document, basically it's called a 3011, which breaks down in great detail the amount of, um, how the project is funded, what the MSBA will financially support. Again, more copies, this is what I'm referring to.
We'll get a line if you read that.
And then the only other thing I'm going to give you, um, and I think it's more just for reference point, um, is actually what the design, the final design and approval of the MSBA looks like.
If you don't have enough, we can share.
So you'll see the exterior of the building's concept, you'll see the floor plan, as well as the site design.
Thank you.
So in general, I, I guess I would, I'll, I'll start with the, um, the MSBA's document. Important numbers in this document are the maximum, what they call the maximum facilities grant, which is $14,689,542. That number is based on excluding contingency monies that are currently in our budget. The, um, second number is 15 million, and these are both in the second paragraph of the MSBA letter, uh, 15,331,279. That is if we were to use the contingency money that we have in the budget, which right now is about a million six, if we were to use it and we used it on eligible cost, they would increase their portion of what they pay for that as well. But their assumption is because they don't know what that's going to be spent on yet, nor do we, it's just contingency, that they always give you the $14 million number as this is what we know you're, you're talking about spending and what we're going to grant you for. So it's a process that you have to go back for. The, um, if you look at that summary sheet that I gave you, um, you'll see those two numbers and how they break down, um, on the form that says the summary, um, 3011. And basically what happens is, as you know, the feasibility stud, study of the town already funded at $700,000. We are only going to spend 300, I'm sorry, 636,000 of that. And even in that, uh, 636, 85,000 was what the town authorized us to spend to buy the sewer capacity. So obviously we're spending considerably less than the 700,000 that was originally estimated, uh, based on the MSBA's numbers. estimated, based on the MSBA's numbers. The balance of $64,000 is being pushed into the construction thing as part of the contingency money. So it's, it's not, hasn't disappeared, it's not, you know, changing, but it's staying within the project under a contingency at this point in time. To go into the next phase, which is the construction phase, again, as you all know, we're required to have an owner's project manager for any project over a million and a half. The owner's project manager would obviously have to be on board from, well, is currently on board, but have to be all the way through the end of the project and through closeout. The current estimate is a million one sixty-eight, 700 for them, the architectural fees to design. Now, what we have for a design, what you see so far, is just, you know, schematic design, it's not detailed plans with all the overlays for plumbing, electrical, you know, and everything kinda coordinated out. And it also does not include all the specifications, which typically on a project like this will be two binders that are about four inches thick. So all we have right now is, is kind of a floor plan layout, with enough engineering done to know that we can actually do this project to that building. So there's a lot of work left for the architects to actually do, to come up with the final thing that goes out to bid, nearly a year from now. The, after that, the actual construction costs, we had two different estimators do the construction costs. One is the estimator that works for the architect, the other one's the estimator that works for the OPM. Technically, the OPM is our agent. So, they both sat down in a room with us, and went line by line through their estimates to make sure that we, they were in coordination, and that one didn't miss something, and vice versa. And they both came out very close to this 27 million, it's actually, neither one of them is that exact number, it's a combination of their two numbers that we felt comfortable with in between. So it's 27,57,050. And again, that even includes a 200, $2 million design and pricing contingency, because we're still a year out from when this actually will go out to bid. Both, all the contingencies are very common for us in all of our projects, you know, the levels that we're carrying right now, at, at this phase. The, there's some miscellaneous costs that are estimated in the project, at about $225,000, which is usually testing utility fees. Example, when we did the town hall, we had about a $35,000 utility fee to get the power brought into the, the new location. So that's what wouldn't fall into that line. And then the last two major components are furniture and equipment and technology. The MSBA, separate in their way of funding things, actually funds furniture and technology based on $1,200 per student for each one of those. Anything you spend over that, they figure that's, you know, what you're going to spend, but that, and they don't expect that you could do the building for 1,200 for each student, but they feel that that's a contribution level that they can afford to do throughout their programs. So, that's how you come down, and then there's an ineligible cost, according to their formulas, of almost $6.5 million. The, this number is primarily driven by one factor, the MSBA has a per square foot cost of $333 that they base their grants on. Now, the $333 is not what a single one of their projects comes in at, all of them are significantly higher. What it basically comes down to is, it's a value based on how many projects they're trying to accomplish with, based on the number of fund, of amount of funding that they have, and it's simple math, it's a division of how many square feet into that number, and that's where the 333 comes from. It's actually gone up slightly since we got in this process, I think it was at like 323, about six months ago, and it's moved up to this number. In our estimates, we're at $440 a square foot. And in, even that 440, when the committee went in front of the MSBA, we were one of the cheapest, or the cheapest, I guess, actually, on a square foot basis, of all the projects that they were approving that day. The 440 is not uncommon in what we've seen in the town hall and other projects, I'm not surprised by it. The $333 unfortunately is, is something that we have to be able to convince and explain to the townspeople, because they, we're, you know, we're getting 56.1%, but we really aren't. You're getting, you know, a number that's factored down.
Available dollars, is what that is.
Right, exactly. On the 56, I think you all remember, we only had 49.31% that we were originally gonna get, but we got credit for using, reusing the existing building of 3.45%. We got credit for the maintenance practices that the town depo, employs, they tried to incentivize towns to actually start taking care of their buildings, and not the ones who don't, you know, obviously don't get these credits, we got a 1.25 credit for that. And then we got a, we're in line right now for a 2% energy efficiency credit for the measures that we will put within the building. So we were actually able to gain another 6.7%, you know, which obviously, when you're looking at these size numbers, is, is a fair amount of money. And so then, again, if you multiply that level at the 56, you get to the 14, 689, that's in their letter. If you add the contingencies for both construction and owner costs at this point, they have an eligibility part of that, which is 810, so it brings you down to a million 145. Again, the 56% times that gives you another 641, that gets you to their second number of 15,5, uh, 15,331,279. So that, that's kind of the summary version of where the, the finances come from. It's, you know, again, we're looking at a project that is a full renovation of a 42,000 square foot building. It's, if you look at the floor plan, third page of the bigger handout that I gave you, if you look to the lower left, the orange gymnasium, storage, and that little hallway in between, that's the addition on that part of the building, everything to the right of that is existing. Go to the back part of the building, where you see the three pre-K rooms, and then the gray space in front of that, which is mechanical space, that's the addition on the backside. Everything to the right of that is the existing building. The additions, basically, we field, which is a specialty federally, you know, required program that we run for children which have been determined to have potentially at risk of not being able to be at grade level when they come in a kindergarten, and have to get additional training. They, those rooms are starting with kids that are two and a half years old, going up to 4.9 years old. So the rooms have to be different than a regular classroom, in that they have to be self-contained, you have to have bathrooms, you really need sinks and stuff like that for lunchtime, within the classroom itself, because you don't have that luxury with a two and a half year old, be able to leave 10 of them by themselves somewhere. So, they are a specially designed room, and there's a, a group space outside in front of that area as well. The, you'll notice that there are a number of group spaces throughout the building, that's the same concept that we deployed at the Hearn, when we built that in 2002. It's worked out phenomenally well for us, it's given a lot more flexibility for the educational core program, to be able to have classrooms work together, as well as to be able to split classrooms apart. It is one of the fundamental things that the MSBA actually does endorse at this point in time, they believe it's the right way for the educational program, and so they are fully in, in giving us credit for that square footage, they're not deducting anything from us. On that point, it's important to note that typically, when a building is designed, and a lot of the ones that were designed that were up for review the day that we were in there, people were getting dinged because their square footage was much greater than the MSBA believes that a classroom or an area should be. In our case, we're, we're within all of their requirements, we didn't extend beyond any of theirs to do this. The big issue, obviously, one of the big square foot gains on this is the gymnasium, 6,000 square feet, our current one is 2,000 square feet. That is kind of what the DEA, DESE and the MSBA believe is appropriate for an elementary. To give you an idea, if we were building a high school, that would be an 8,000 square foot gym. So there's a difference, it's not, you know, it's not gonna be a high school basketball court, but it is a elementary level basketball. You'll also notice that that wing was designed with two separate entrances, so that the rest of the building can be locked down, very similar to we, how we've done every building in town, where we have certain features that can be public features to the building without sacrificing our security on the building. The buildings now have to, under state building code, all of the exterior windows have to have a, a safety glass level of protection. We're in a high velocity zone, which is kind of surprising to me, in, in Foxborough where we are, so we'd have to have rate of hurricane windows on all these things. We're looking at something called, uh, school guard windows, which are a little bit higher than that, but they also have other benefits relative to, you know, if someone were to shoot at it, or try to hit it with, you know, a, a heavy weapon, or something like that, that they are more resistant to that and hold up longer. You can't go to full quote-unquote bulletproof glass because of its weight. A standard door with bulletproof glass would be about 350 pounds, and there's not too many elementary kids that can open those doors. So, but there's ways of doing it, and the way we've done it is where you have multiple glass levels, one behind the other, which, at which point, if they had to go through two of those, they would not make it through the two series. The lobby vestibule has a lockdown, so that you have to come into the front office to get the authority to move into the building, if it, if it's after school, it's actually started. And that's, again, a better security value than we have in, in many of our buildings, so it's a feature that we really kind of like, the way that's gonna work out. I think the, you know, again, most of you know that the, the school building committee is made up of 17 people, the nine town building committee members that you appoint, plus the, the requirement by the MSBA, which includes a school committee member, a, the superintendent, the principal of the school, the assistant superintendent, town manager, finance director, a, 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 a board, board member, board of select members member, and an MCPPO, Roger Hadfield was initially, I am now, obviously because he's retiring, so. But those are the requirements that they have, because what they wanna make sure is that it's not something that's being done by one group, that nobody else knows what's going on. They've been burned too many projects, and it makes, so it makes a lot of sense. So while it's not a quote-unquote town board that is appointed that way, it is a town board, in the sense that it represents a lot of facets, and it does have your nine-member building committee as its core. Technically, the building commi, committee could outvote the, because we have the biggest piece of that, but, so I think we have all the same requirements we have to do in any of the projects. Are there any questions on the facility itself, or changes that are being made there?
Could you just touch on some of the, you talked about the building, but the site, site amenities, parking, playgrounds, things like that?
Okay, so, yeah, actually, if you look at before that one, backside of it, you'll see how this lays out. What's, so what's happening is, in the initial, the original building, the front classrooms actually extended further to the left, going to Coccasity. We will be bringing the pre-K in line with what that original educational wing was, so we're extending it closer to where the circle is, that, that the mini buses and, and parents drop off. That is gonna be the pre-K only entrance wing, which is what we currently use it for, it's a nice controlled environment, again, those kids are coming and going all day long, it's not something that they come in at, at, you know, eight o'clock. So that will have to be redesigned, the utilities will be redesigned on that side as well. Rosie's Garden, I think you may know, is a feature that was put in there to honor one of the Borough School District. It has to be moved, but we've already had it reviewed, and we know how we can move it, and where we're gonna move it to, we have talked to the family as well, so they know what's coming on here. But, so it's gonna be moved right to the backside, the caving is there. The, the, the nice thing about this layout, and the reason that this layout worked well for us, and I think it was probably why the building was put where it was originally, kind of in the center of the 25-plus acres, is that around the outside, there are different limitations. On one side, it's wetlands, on the other side, it's ledge, on the other side, it's railroad tracks, and in the front side, it's, it's residential housing. When we looked at the option of potentially putting a brand-new building, instead of trying to renovate this building, the only place it would fit is where that existing front larger parking lot is, and because of the constraints of the neighbors' properties, it was really a jagged-looking two-story building, which was not the most efficient layout, number one, and really, for an elementary school, it's not what you wanna do, you'd like to have single-story elementaries if you possibly can, because of the clientele that you're dealing with. Kids that are not typically the most coordinated at that point in their lives, that, you know, you might have kids that are handicapped, issues that way, you're, they're, you know, they're more at risk when you have a multi-level building than they would be once they get to middle school and high school. So, it just didn't work, and that's, and even though the numbers were very close, Jim, to your point, it would have meant redoing all of the fieldwork. So, because we would have displaced the front field, we would have displaced the field on the left, we would have then had to tear down the building, redo the parking on the top, redo all of the fields into the back. The beauty of having the building centered the way it is, is we are able to actually segregate the different class levels. So that front playground really is your third, fourth grade playground, the right one is your first and second grade playground, and the back one is your garden playground. So they each have their own areas to, to be able to go out during the day, and not have to worry about the different levels, you know, dealing with each other, and, and keeping it as safe as you possibly can. The, we did do repaving in that front area, we intend, you know, intend to maintain that, and do, you know, have to do as low as possible in that area, but where you see the renovated playground, note on the left side, we have to do a, a very interesting drainage system there, as part of the new state law that's coming through, because we have to retain as much water on-site when we have major storms, off the roof lines. So there's actually a whole different drainage system that's gonna go into that area. So those playgrounds, even though they're shown there, they're, they're actually gonna have to be picked up, you know, because we'd be putting new stuff underneath them. Other than that, the other playgrounds have to be brought up to code. The new code on playgrounds is that you have to have handicap accessibility, obviously most of these were mulch playgrounds, and, and you could never, you have a wheelchair in there. If, if you've ever looked at the IGO playground in the back, you'll see that there's actually rubber cartways that go around, it would be that concept, but you also have to go around the apparatus. So, the playgrounds also have to have some major changes. The biggest, one of the bigger advantages of keeping the building where it is, is the site is limited to an 8% of construction cost that the MSBA would participate in. In a new construction site that we would have done, we would have probably doubled or tripled that, and anything over the 8% would have been totally on the town anyway, because they would not participate in that. So there's, there are savings in, in staying with the renovation of the building, as well.
Well thought out. What's the future expansion, is that pointing to a building, or is that a site to the right of the building, as you come off of Moore Street, the yellow line?
That's a, the future expansion of that playground.
Of the playground?
Yeah. That was exist, that's the, currently, it's the existing septic systems that would be taken out as part of that sewer expansion, so that becomes available to be, to use.
Looks nice.
So if you look at the actual motion, you'll note that what the, the requirement by the MSBA, and this came up for the AdCom last night, and I, I really think I should've answered this a little bit better than I did. The MSBA requires that you actually ask for the authority of the entire cost under the town side. Because if you read their agreements, first of all, even the $14 million, they make a caveat that it's not guaranteed at 14 million, which is true, because if we go out to bid, and our entire project cost came in $5 million less, like they did at the high school, they need to take their share back as well. So it's, they're, they're not guaranteeing, they're gonna give you the 14, they'll give you 14 if you, everything worked the way your budget says, but it can drop, so they don't wanna be in a position where you deduct $10 million from here, and it's not the way it ends up laying out, okay? That said, they have never defaulted on their funding of a school project. I had to say that at the high school, I remember standing up in front of town meeting, because there were a lot of nervous people on how this thing works, but they have never defaulted on it, and in fact, they, their process is much better now, because now, once the project is done, they pay us out immediately. In the old days, when we did the Hearn project, that, in, in the IGO project, they used to pay you out over the 20-year bond. They've, they've gone away from that whole process, they pay their share out now, you're, they're done and off, and, and you do your. So even if you're asking for 33,907, that's also 700,000 less than what the total budget is at, because we've already funded 700,000. Alright, we don't have to fund that one twice, and that was funded through free cash. In the actual article, or motion itself, you'll note that we're gonna come up with roughly $4 million in money that the town has already got put away in cash, and Randy could speak to this better, but it will basically bring us down into a, a bonding effect of about $15 million on the town side. You know, we've, we've, we've put away $2.1 million in the capital stabilization fund, and that's obviously part of this. The million dollars that's gonna be out of the overlay surplus has already been released, and then, you know, we have 100,000 that's coming, you know, potentially from the town hall project, as well as 100,000 from other free cash available funds, so that's where that 4 million is coming from. I, I am comfortable personally, again, having gone through this so many times with the MSBA's process, that- process, that even though we have to ask, and again, they stipulate this, they basically look at this wording, they make sure that it's exactly what they want it to be, because they've been burned in too many communities, and bond council had to look at it as well, to make sure that they agreed with how this whole thing would lay out for our side of it. But it is very similar, if you go back and look at the high school project, this is a very similar thing, other than we didn't have those caveats of the extra cash coming from stabilization and stuff like that, but the other part of it's almost identical to the high school one.
When are we looking at starting construction?
So, as you'll also see in their letter, we have a hundred and twenty days to get our approval, and that was one of the things why we wanted to push to get us on the special town meeting quickly. We are looking to actually start construction in late October, November of next year, with the two additions, the pre-K and the, Jim? Yep. One of the other features on that, that, you know, I think we've done to be at this phase already, and have kind of already worked out what our phasing is, and we had to bring that into the MSBA to show how we would actually make this thing work. The MSBA will not participate in portable classrooms, you know, so if we were to bring out nine classrooms, we would be paying, you know, the million dollars on our own. We looked at different concepts, and one of the options is if we got the pre-K, if we started that sooner, because it's outside of the building, and we were able to have it available for use the first September, which is about nine to ten months later, which everybody feels comfortable that can be done, we'd have the pre-K three classrooms, and we would have the gymnasium. The gymnasium, we're not going to put the hardwood floor in, we're going to break it into six classrooms up front. Would allow us to move nine classrooms out of the existing space, which would be the far right of the building, again, kind of segregating it from as much as you possibly can. Doing those nine classrooms, swinging them into the new space, you know, we'd be moving the kids out of the swing space, into the new space that's completed, and then going in the space of completing the rest of the building. Obviously, we're going to be doing major projects during summers, call them summer slammers, in ten weeks, trying to do a tremendous amount of work. I think if you remember here at the high school, we had to do the entire science wing in one summer, and we gutted the whole thing, and we had, you know, large equipment inside the building, and accomplished it. It takes a lot of coordination, and it takes a lot of effort, but we're not afraid of it before, and, you know, we've done a number, we did the same thing with the Ahern, you know, that was a phased approach, two-and-a-half-year project, just the same. So, we believe that it is, while it's disruptive to the students that will be in the borough, it's the most practical way to do it, and not disrupt the entire district. So we've got, you know, roughly three hundred children that are in that school, and if we manage this properly, that's the population that we potentially have to be very conscious of how we're dealing with. If we were to do what has been recommended by some others, where we take all the kids out of there and try to do the same shot, we're going to disrupt the educational process for twenty-six-hundred kids throughout the district, and we've never done that on a single project we've done. We've done each project and lived on its own, so that it affected the fewest that we possibly could, and still, you know, managed to disrupt the educational process the best we could.
Good luck. So taking those three hundred kids and putting them, say, one fifty, one fifty, to the other two elementaries, or breaking them up to the other, to school, high school and middle school? You did look at that, but that just doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense, but we also don't have the room to do it. You know, it's been said that we do, based on the way the buildings were built in nineteen sixty-five, and how many, but if you look at the way our buildings are used currently, and I'll give you a great example, going to the Taylor School today, there are, what was originally built as classrooms, to have students in them, now are your computer lab, okay? Didn't have that in nineteen sixty-five. We have a lot more special needs programs that we run within our core buildings, which take up classrooms, so we don't have that space. So, even though the building was technically built to have twenty-two classrooms, it doesn't have twenty-two functioning classrooms anymore. That's the problem throughout the entire district, to be honest with you. The savings to the community is, in the way we're using the buildings, is that we don't have, we have fewer kids that are out of district, which is where the real money in special ed is. We're able to deal with those kids within our programs, within our community, and I think that's a huge thing for a lot of families, number one, but it's also a huge cost factor for how we do it. But it has also changed how our buildings are used. The secondary part of that, and where the high school was always the one that, oh, you used to have twelve hundred kids in the school, we didn't have, you know, seventeen AP courses, which granted are smaller courses, but it's an offering for a group of kids that basically not have those features, that take up rooms. So there's a whole dynamic of how the educational process is done in two thousand and eighteen that wasn't done in nineteen sixty-five. And I think that's what I credit, you know, the, you know, school-side administration and educators, they know that side of it. And when we looked at it, it was like, that makes no sense. Really, we can't, we can't do that and say that we can not disrupt everything else. We would literally-
This was a loaded question, I'm not, I guess this is-
No, I know, it's been put out there, and it has to be answered, and I think, I think the other side of that is that if we were to do that, we know we would have to limit our offerings to, in those other buildings for a while, and that wouldn't be appropriate either to those kids.
It doesn't even speak to the issue of mixing high school kids with grammar kids.
I think you all remember, we did have the eighth grade at the high school at one point in time. We're a lot of happy people. We also had the fourth grade, the middle school at one point, and that was-
That can be a real challenge, obviously.
At that meeting you had at the Boyd, and when you guys rolled out that website, a lot of, you know, at town meeting, people will come up and say they didn't have all the information, or weren't ready. Can you talk a little bit about that website, and what's found there, so that people can get themselves ready, and up to speed with all this?
So we try to, on the website, we try to keep all of the information out there, so if you look at it, you'll see our committee meeting minutes are all up there, any of our presentations are actually up there, they can see the contents on the site itself, they can see, you know, news articles that have been written, as far as, you know, how we've progressed through this process, they'll see MSBA approvals that are out there. So we've tried to put the factual parts of this whole project, and I will grant you, having done a lot of these projects for the town, it makes sense to me, a lot of the stuff makes sense to me, because I've done it so many times, it is confusing sometimes when you look at it, but I think that website is very clear, because we tried to keep it in the eyesight of how, you know, any resident would look at it. There's some frequently asked questions that explain some of the things on cost, and, you know, enrollments and stuff like that. Again, I think that website is an effective tool for us, if people want to look at it.
Yeah, I think it's really effective, and there's a lot, like you said, you can go pick and choose whatever you want to know about, so I hope people, you know, know about it, and go out there, and look, and get whatever information that they want ahead of time, so.
Are you in your office tomorrow?
Yes.
Want to stop by, I want to talk about the relocation of Rosie's Garden a little bit?
Sure.
See what the plan is, and see where I can help.
So this is my fifth time, or sixth time, hearing the presentation, and the good thing is, it hasn't changed.
You sure the numbers haven't changed?
The numbers have not changed.
Well, they've come down a little, actually, for the earlier ones, but.
No, just-
It's a really good process.
Very, very, very thorough.
And it's really well-respected by the MSBA, by the way.
Been talking about this for a long time, and it's good to see it starting to come to fruition, so.
I will thank, and I have to thank Randy and, you know, and Bill and stuff, as far as the way they have looked at the finances in the town, and getting this to work within the operating budget. It was something that we, you know, we were concerned about a couple of years ago, when there was discussions about how, you know, potentially giving a break to taxpayers at one point versus running forward. This was, this is kind of the whole reason why that was a concern to us, because this way now, the taxpayers aren't being asked to put up a separate piece of money, they're getting their money back in a way of doing, and we used that, in that year, I think the appropriate action that was taken, which I thought was, everybody got behind, was, instead of giving the money back to taxpayers in a small break at that point, to put it into stabilization, to basically buy down this future debt. So, I think we're, we've set the town up to be in a good position, it's unusual to have a town have two projects in a row that are, you know, within the, our debt structure, and within our taxable income without asking for additional, as Randy has said, I doubt we'll have a third one for a long time, but, that we could fit within this, but, you know, it is great that this has worked this way, and again, I think it's been a lot of cooperation, and it's been good, because they've been on this committee, seeing how it's progressing and understanding all along, it's not like something we had to educate them on halfway through the project. I appreciate that.
It's actually a first for me, in my thirty-five years, I've never done this, actually funded it within the levy for a school, so, it's to be, it's to your credit, and to Randy's credit for figuring it out.
Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, you're up next.
Everybody in my team, it's all been a bit too active.
Hey, do anything about the AC in this room, by the way, is that okay?
It's turned off, actually, it's supposed to be on right now, because I call them.
So, good evening. This one is pretty straightforward, this is basically an effort by the department heads to clear up some ambiguity in some local bylaw that we observed, and in essence, what happened is, we had a bylaw that is currently labeled peddling and soliciting, and we have an application, either peddlers or solicitors have been filling out, that also is called peddling and soliciting. And the state regulations scheme in state statute contemplates canvassers and solicitors as one group, and hawkers and peddlers as a separate group. And canvassers and solicitors are typically handled in local bylaws, and hawkers and peddlers are generally handled by selectman rules. So, we got the department heads that interact with canvassers and solicitors, which is magazine salesmen, maybe the best example of people that come to your door at inopportune moments and want to sell you magazines, whereas hawkers and peddlers might be people selling T-shirts somewhere along Route One, you know, in connection with a content game. Those are the two best examples to help people understand what each group consists of. And so, as we got the department heads that interact with these two groups, planning board, code enforcement, border health, police, and fire, we decided that it made sense to clean this up while we had an opportunity. So, we have crafted the canvassing and soliciting bylaw, and we will be submitting rules on hawkers and peddlers for the board to consider at a later time. And while we are straightening out the ambiguities, I just wanted to highlight a couple of quick changes in this regulation, this bylaw that will be hopefully enacted. First of all, it changes, it eliminates the ambiguity, and it calls, it calls canvassers and solicitors what they are. We have created a new application in cooperation with the selectmen's office, that is called a canvasser and solicitor application exclusively for these, this group of people. We eliminated a ambiguous and hard-to-define piece of language from the old bylaw, which talked about the police chief having to make a determination about the morals and integrity of the applicants, and changed that to have us look at felony convictions and misdemeanor convictions within the prior five years, much more straightforward. We added time limits, which did not exist previously, so a canvasser and solicitor could come to your door at any hour of the day or night, and we've added limitation, and followed what is a very common method of dealing with time restrictions, and made it nine AM to half an hour after sunset, so that that moves with the time of year. So, obviously, they can come to your home later in the summer, when it's light until nine o'clock, conversely, they may be out of business at four o'clock in the afternoon in the middle of the winter. There was a lot of talk about different times, which we expected to be the biggest concern on the residents, many of whom call us when solicitors come around dinnertime or later. And town council was concerned about our ability to sustain an unreasonably early restriction, like an eight-to-four time limit, so we went with a classic, well-accepted time limitation. In addition, we decided in the rules that you will see, to honor the state license, which the state issues for hawkers and peddlers, rather than try to duplicate the licensing at the state and local level, if you've got a state license, we're not going to double-dip you and make you get a local license, we're just going to ask you to comply with the local rules, which may be more stringent than the state rules contained in the state statute. And then the last thing that we did was, there are exemptions for local charitable organizations and recreational activities and so on, we added political speech to that, so political speech is also exempted from this regulation. And those are the substantive changes in the bylaw, which we hope figures up some confusion that might have existed if we hadn't taken this on.
This was actually attempted a couple times, Chief, and then we all, we were able to rally all the forces together, and get everybody assembled into a couple rooms, a couple meetings, and reviewed several drafts with town council, and at the end of the day, the one, the diversion you have before you now is one that we've all agreed on. So it's been, it's been pretty well-vetted internally, both from a operational perspective as well as a legal perspective.
So, I know in the past, not too long ago, we had a couple of applicants before us, and now with this, they'll all go through you, and we don't have to get involved in any of that?
Correct. It'll streamline it, and like I said, we cleared up some of the ambiguous language, like morals and integrity, and, you know, I forget what the issue was, you actually had someone who came before you.
It was a hawker and peddler, it was different than the canvassing one.
And it was, it was difficult, because the guy was sort of wearing his life on his sleeve there, and it was not, it was not a fun discussion to have with this gentleman, so this puts it in a much better perspective by doing it with a-
But that's, that's different, though, that was hawker and peddler, and this is-
This would actually, this would now go to the chief to be evaluated.
So that person would have to have a state license, state hawking and peddling license, and then when he, once he gets to us, he'd simply have to fill out the application and comply with the selectmen's rules, which we'll bring to you at a later date.
And then you approve it, it doesn't ever get in front of us unless you deny it, and then he has a right.
It could be an appeal, potentially, yeah.
And is there anywhere, I know, just because nowadays, people get freaked out when anyone comes to the door, I mean, they could be as legitimate as they come, and it's still freak show, is there, or can there be a list posted anywhere, is that allowed, of, because they're good for a year, anywhere on the police department page, like any active, especially canvassing licenses?
Absolutely. We can make that happen, both on our social media page and on the town website.
Yeah, because I always ask people, but you never, there's no, I mean, I don't want to bother you guys every time someone comes to the door, but it would be good to look and see, okay, this is approved.
Yeah, we're trying to, trying to centralize the receipt of the applications through PAN, so although we will do the background and approve it, it will come through PAN, so when everybody gets notified of the approval, we can simply post them on the town website and make that more transparent, absolutely.
Now, have you gone through AdCom with this yet?
Yes.
They have any questions?
I had one question, and I had failed to review the state statute right before the meeting, and as a lawyer, I was pretty embarrassed, but they asked me what chapter, what chapter one oh one, section seventeen, was, I'm like, oh. So I guessed, unfortunately, I guessed right, but there's a couple statutory references in there that they wanted to understand, and it changed the penalty if a solicitor employed a child under eighteen and violated the regulations, they're subject to a five-hundred-dollar fine instead of a three-hundred-dollar fine. Other than that, one of the members asked if there were any unintended consequences or anything that we thought would be controversial, and the only thing that all of us thought about was, people may want to restrict the time more stringently than we've contemplated here, you know, because a half hour after sunset on a summer night is pretty late in the evening, but town council was pretty confident that we'd get overturned if we tried to make it too restrictive.
Overturned by the state?
Yeah, by the attorney general's office, who view it as unconstitutional restriction on free speech and commerce.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're a contractor, you can only work from seven AM to seven PM, so it's no different if I'm a contractor working or selling magazines.
I mean, contractors are generally working on a site that someone hired them to work on, whereas the solicitors are coming to your house uninvited, so arguably, there's a difference, but there's a lot of case law in this, so you do have to be reasonable in terms of the time, place, and manner restrictions that you put on these activities.
So I was at the AdCom meeting last night, and at the end of the night, they were looking to have a few people back, and the chief was not on that list, so he seemed satisfied with his presentation.
Thank the good Lord.
Especially where you were last night.
All right, any other questions?
Great, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thanks, Chief. By the way, do you want to just show the board your badge, that's a commemorative-
Oh, yeah, that's a cool badge.
Nine eleven, this is the nine eleven commemorative badge?
Sure, yeah, that-
While you're here.
So, we talked about this in the news release that we did, but- So, we talked about this in the news release that we did, but our new officer, Scott Dion, like many of the other new officers are bringing their creativity and patriotism with him. So, we'll be wearing that badge. Every officer will wear that badge for the month of September in honor of the nine eleven victims and first responders, military. And then, we'll be going to the pink patches in October for cancer survivors. So, a couple of nice symbolic gestures.
Are those available for purchase?
They could be. We only, we made them for, you know, each officer, but the vendor that made them certainly could produce more. We haven't contemplated that, but...
That's cool, that's cool. Good idea.
Yeah. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Chief. So, Mr. Chairman, we talked about the outcome of this meeting, knowing that it was the first time the board members had seen this material. Obviously, it's less than what we anticipated. It's only eight articles versus eleven. It was actually, I think, originally started out with seventeen, so it's down considerably from that number. So, we talked about the prospect, because given the fact that we are in a limited timeframe to kind of get this all done, if you actually were to meet on the holdoff until the eighteenth to take your final action on this, it would actually be beyond the date, which we needed to post the meeting for two weeks. So, the prospect, or the option was, if the board wasn't comfortable acting on it tonight, certainly, you know, that's your choice. If you're not comfortable taking the action tonight, the option would be to have a special meeting on the eleventh, which would be a week from, which would be next Tuesday night. You could have a special meeting to do that, or you could proceed with making, taking an action tonight. That's your option. I do have one executive session grievance hearing that could occur on that same night as well. If you so choose, you do the eleventh, or we can push it to the eighteenth. Those are your options.
Is the eighteenth too late for...
Eighteenth would be too late for the warrant to be acted on, so, because we have to post it for two weeks, according to what the...
So, what's the drop dead date on that?
The eleventh would be seventeenth, so...
What's the rest of the board? I mean, I'm never an advocate of voting on something that we just saw for the first time, but a lot of this, we knew it was there, just didn't...
I don't think there's a lot of surprise in this, but certainly, you have time to consider it.
What is the rest of the board?
The fact that Mark's not here either.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. That's a good point.
Is everybody available next Tuesday night?
Nope. So, you have four, you'll have four again.
You guys available?
I was already in the, there's another meeting that we'll have to figure out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. We have another, we have a downtown branding meeting, who's the same night as well.
I know it's unusual, but sometimes the board would meet in the morning.
Yeah, if there's any, if you want to meet, yeah, you could do that, if that works for everybody. Nope.
It's a bad two weeks for me.
Okay.
So... But that shouldn't, my attendance shouldn't hold up.
Well, let me ask you, is there any particular articles that you object to?
No, I mean, I...
Or you see anything that's...
There's nothing here that really concerns me. If the contracts were on this, then I'd have a real issue about voting tonight.
Yeah.
But with the fact that the contracts are out, I have no issues with anything that I...
Yeah, again, too, I'm never a fan of voting on something, but we've seen all of this, we knew all of this was on there. There's nothing, I don't think, major. I mean, we knew the school was coming, we knew. So, I mean, I know Doc's not here, but if we do it next Tuesday, he's not here.
Actually, it could be a potential for Leah as well, a problem for Leah, next Tuesday, because of the branding meeting. Right now, you're supposed to both be there at that one.
I know, she really doesn't want to push that one off.
No, because there's a lot of people coming for that.
Yeah.
It's hard to get people together.
So, do we want to...
You could meet earlier before that meeting, that night, before the, is it seven o'clock when that meeting starts? Branding meeting?
I don't know. I think it is a...
Yeah, it's at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
So, you could conceivably meet if that works for everybody. I know it's not, it's a proper day.
You don't know what Doc's schedule is like, though?
And that's a Tuesday night, and he's typically, he doesn't see patients on Tuesday nights, so typically.
You could do a six o'clock.
Do a six o'clock meeting, and you take your action, and then go right into our seven o'clock meeting.
Six o'clock, Tuesday, work for you? Leah? Yeah, it'll work for me. All right, so why don't we do that? I know it won't work for you.
As long as you're okay with everything before...
I brought this up because, I mean, there's nothing on here that, in my mind, is controversial. I look at it as go and no-go to take an article off, because it's the first time we've seen it. If it's a dotting of the I, it gets picked up by the AdCom.
Right.
So, I don't have a big reservation, I don't want to...
And you said AdCom's coming back for a couple, that they needed people to come back for a couple of months.
Just for a couple of clarifications, but actually, those hearings have gone pretty well, for the most part.
So, what you're saying, Jim, is you wouldn't mind voting on this tonight? Or you want to...
Personally, I don't mind voting on it. I just wanted the discussion of that, we have one selectman that's not there, and he hasn't seen it at all, or if he has, he hasn't given any feedback, that's all I'm saying.
That's a good point.
If you guys want to wait, you know where I stand.
All right, so why don't we try to schedule it for six o'clock, Tuesday, the eleventh?
We'll try and get him briefed on the articles in the meantime, if we can.
I have to.
And suppose I have everybody come back in for a presentation, all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and then...
I'll just ask me if he has any questions about any of the articles, and we'll try and get those questions answered.
On the other executive session item, wait until David's around, so we can...
We can do it on the eighteenth.
Yeah, which actually, I won't be here in that meeting, so...
Okay.
Fine, you can brief me on that.
And what would that look like next Tuesday?
Basically, just walk in?
Not go through all...
No.
No, this would be, you know, vote to...
I mean, if anybody, I would say, let's root, read everything that we've got tonight, any questions, you know, get them to Bill, try to get answers before next Tuesday night. I think a lot of this is pretty straightforward.
But also, and we discussed this at the very first meeting we had, that it's a very expedited schedule. This is really the first time that this has been discussed on camera. I mean, people don't go to the AdComs, and they don't go to the subcommittee meeting, so if somebody's at home seeing this, they may have an issue. So, it gives them another week.
All right, so with that scheduled...
Okay, so we'll try and shoot for six o'clock next Tuesday night, and I'll move the executive session to the eighteenth.
All right, selectmen's update. Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about the POW?
Sure.
Yeah, because I definitely wanted to mention that, but I wouldn't mind hearing what you have on the agenda for that.
Absolutely. So, as the chairman mentioned earlier, this will be our eighth POW MIA remembrance day in a row. And that'll start at four PM on September twenty-first, with a vigil, as we've done in the past. And then, that'll go for twenty-four hours. At four PM on Saturday, the twenty-second, we'll have a ceremony, which will last about forty-five minutes, up on the Common Bandstand. Our rep and senator have been invited, and of course, the representative from the selectmen, you know, we would love to have come up and give some remarks, as well as the town manager, if he's available. And I will be unfortunately out of state for that weekend, but I have someone who will be the stand-in emcee. My assistant will be coordinating events, as well as somebody from the Veteran Services Advisory Committee. Post-one oh-six Legion Riders will be participating in the overnight vigil, and would like, again, to present a new POW MIA flag to the board of selectmen. Right now, the existing POW MIA flag on the Common is in bad need of replacement, and that is because the rope has come off of the top of the wheel on the flagpole, and Tree and Parks Department is taking care of that this coming week, so it'll be ready before the ceremony. The, I believe that the Senator and Rep's Department, as well as the VFW and Legion, will be providing coffee and donuts for the folks who do stand the vigil overnight. We'll have the missing man table set up next to the bandstand on the Common. In addition, that same day, Saturday, the twenty-second, there's a ceremony going on that I want people to be aware of, that I have not coordinated, but it is important to the town. It's the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Memorial Hall, so there will be reenactors during the day down at the south end of the Common, while we are up at the north end of the Common. And I've spoken with the chairman of the Historical Commission, Mark Forensic, and he and I have both agreed that there is not a conflict, in fact, that two events complement each other. So, we're excited to see both things going on at the same time. And the Maryland Rodman Center will be open, they'll be showing a film, which will also complement the events, as well as having the restrooms open for the events on the Common. So, we're excited to have another great event, acknowledging and remembering our Foxborough members who have been prisoners of war, and who have been or continue to be missing in action.
That's good. With all that other stuff going on, it'll draw more attention to all, so that's good.
That's on the twenty, like, it's the twenty...
Starts the twenty-first, the ceremony itself is on Saturday, the twenty-second.
We got a letter today.
Yeah, we saw that. Yeah, I just couldn't...
And there's a sign-up sheet somewhere, if somebody wants to take part in the vigil overnight?
There is. Folks can contact my office, and then David Coffey, who's a member of the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, he's actually maintaining that list, but those calls can come into my office, five four three twelve oh four.
All right, anybody have anything for selectmen's update?
I meant to mention it last time, and I just, I didn't. I wanted to just recognize the Recreation Department for the summer program. I think it was a huge success, and, you know, the amount of kids, I forget what the number is.
It's close to three hundred.
Yeah, it's like three eighty or something, I want to say, but, you know, having my kids participate, and it was a great summer, there was a lot of challenges with weather and heat, and I think that the staff and, you know, some of the counselors just did a really good job, and the new CIT program was really great, too, so...
Good. I just want to let everybody know, remind everybody, this Saturday is the McGinty Family Fund Day, the fourteenth annual one. Cindy will be here with her son. It's going to be a really good one. We've gotten a lot of great raffle stuff. Found out last night, one of Mike's classmates, Mike was a Naval Academy grad, one of his classmates donated two club seats to the Army-Navy game for our raffle, so we're going to be...
To see the Navy win?
No, Army's going to win. So, I made a stipulation on that, the raffle's only open to selectmen chairman, so they'll win.
I'll see the day when that Army-Navy game, you come in with your Army hat on, you come in with the Navy hat on, I want to see how that works. It's on camera.
The December meeting will do that. I'll bring my flag. But a lot of hard work throughout the community, a lot of extra support from the community this year, more so than Cindy and I and our committee has ever seen. Residents stepping up, donating, volunteering their time, businesses going above and beyond, so it's a good tradition. Again, fourteenth annual, and also, just to remind everybody, Tuesday morning, the fire station will do there, September eleventh Remembrance, nine thirty, I believe, which is the seventeenth anniversary. That's all I have.
I think, just quickly, I think I'd be remiss, tonight was the last night of the farmer's market, I think it was a successful...
Did it actually happen?
It happened for about an hour until the tents blew away, poor Jack, the light went running with his World War II books, it was a tough ending. But they put a lot of time, and I think it was successful, the vendors, a lot of them said, if not all of them, will come back next year. And it was kind of a test this year with the trash and the parking and the traffic, how it was going to work, but I think between that and the great job that the J.C.'s did on the concerts in the Common, which ended a couple Thursdays ago, I think next year will be just as nice, if not nicer.
I'm sad it's over.
Yeah, no, I think it was well-received. It really was.
A good summer.
Yeah.
Good summer.
All right. Town manager's update?
All right, just a couple of things. The generator funds that we got awarded from the state, I did get a letter from the senator and from the rep that, well, is good enough for Randy's use, and he will, we will actually appropriate, set the money aside to use, and get the money set aside to start working on that right away.
Good.
So, I just got that resolved today, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, can you just make sure to stay right on top of that whole process?
Yeah, certainly will. Yeah, we know that's important. We're going to get that going, so... I am still working, I'm, I am actively working on trying to get a meeting with the Snyder rep, too, by the way, and the board had indicated that at some point, we should do that. And I think I have something scheduled for as early as next week, so, to make that happen. So, the rep was away, he was out of country, actually, so I was able to figure it out.
Was that with John?
It was Paul.
Oh, Paul, okay.
So, so, special meetings resolved. The Keating Funeral Home, there was a question that came in from Mark Forensic, who's the chairman of the Historical Commission, and they had indicated that they wanted to try and see if the town had any interest in pursuing the possibility of having someone, you know, possibly just take the house, the former funeral home, and move it somewhere to some other location. We reviewed that with the EDC last night, and the EDC was not favorably disposed towards doing that, because they worried that it might interfere with the development process that's going on with that site and the timing of that. So, I've conveyed that message to Mark. I told him that, you know, the possibility certainly still exists that we could, that the developer, whoever that is, could work with the commission and its reps to try and get somebody interested to move their house if they wanted to do that. So, that possibility still exists, it's just that the timing, that is not to do it now until we understand who we're dealing with on that site. Which sort of leads me into the fire station proposals, which we are actively still working on, we've had some active interest in it, which is good to see, and some of the stuff is pretty exciting, so I'm glad to see that. So, we'll be opening that at the end of the month, so stay tuned on that front, but things look pretty, more exciting each day. Mark Craig started his official role as the new Human Services Director on Monday, it's Tuesday, rather. He was, he's been really well-received by everyone. I just talked to Manny late today, who was the library director, and he said they're already connected on how they're going to do things together, so I'm really excited about seeing that come together. And I think those were, those were my key points for this report. I think there was something else I wanted to talk about, too, but it sort of escapes me now, so we'll let it go.
Sure. We've been really busy with recruitment. As Bill said, the Human Services Director started, and a while back, we started a new onboarding process for department heads, where we set up meetings for them all, you know, spend an hour with every single person on site, so they'd go to the fire station, police station, library, recreation, and it just forms a nice bond. People talk about how they're going to work together, and it's worked quite well, and Mark Craig, by all reports, is enjoying that. We have a communications manager starting in dispatch, that's the supervisory non-union position. For dispatch, we made an offer, the new person will be starting, that was vacancy that we've had for about two months. We're also in the process of hiring police officers. We have a live active civil service list, where we're looking for, we're now doing backgrounds on people. The chief has identified two top candidates. We're also looking at a lateral transfer police officer, which is, you know, an experienced police officer who doesn't need to go through the academy, so it's a good blend to bring in two new and one lateral for the three openings that exist through promotions, injury, and there was an existing opening. We are in the process of reviewing resumes for IT analyst, which was also a position that's been open for quite a long time, and we're coming close on, Bill's going to meet a finalist for the department administrator in the Building Department, our long-term administrator in the Building Department will be retiring in October. And tomorrow, we'll...
She won't miss, too, though?
Yeah, she's amazing.
She's been a stalwart for many years.
And tomorrow, I'm excited to report that we're going to post the Veteran Services Officer job, so that will be...
Why we're doing that?
That will be posted from Friday, September seventh through September twenty-eighth, so if anyone's interested, it'll be on our website. We have an online application, and excited to see who comes in. excited to see who, who comes in. Um, you, I'm certain you noticed that we were supposed to have an executive session last night, um, and I apologize. We were in eleventh-hour negotiations with the library and just, it went very well, but we all realized that there was just too much, um, still to go through, to, to rush anything for this fall town meeting. So, library negotiations are ongoing. Um, we're revisiting the police negotiations and fire, so hopefully by spring town meeting, we'll have those contracts in place. And, um, we're moving forward with the strategy with regard to dispatch as well. So, um, we have an employee benefits fair coming up on September twentieth, which, if any of our employees or retirees are watching, um, it's the usual, um, location, the Hearn Middle School, and that's where we have a lot of our health, um, our health insurance, life, dental, benefit people, as well as investment folks, um, and it's a good place to come and also get your flu shot, if you're an employee. And, uh, that's September twentieth. We'll be, Amanda's designing the brochure as we speak, and that'll be sent out to employees. And we are, um, continuing our code of conduct civility training. Our department heads were trained in April. We've got, uh, two sessions next Wednesday for board and committee members and, um, employees, and then we also have two, uh, trainings taking place in October. We're at, we're gonna ask cable, um, we haven't asked them yet, if they will film one of those sessions, so that we will have a recording for our public safety folks to view. Um, because of the way their shifts work, it's hard to sit them all in a building and do the training with them. However, um, that's what we generally do with workplace violence. All of those trainings, we'll put it on a CD and they'll watch it at roll call or when they have the opportunity, so.
So, just if I can interrupt, so that email that we just got this afternoon was for all committee members and all?
Yes. We sent it out through the, um, board and committees.
And it's just for the code of conduct?
That's for the code of conduct civility training, yep.
Now, why, so that's the only one, I, I was confused when I got it, because there's so many different policies.
Yep.
We signed this off fifteen months ago.
This is the one that you, um, the personnel board recommended, town council, town manager recommended, that applies to boards and committee members as well. Some of our policies, like social media, um, we don't govern boards and committees with that, but with this code of conduct civility, um, the idea, and other communities who have this, is that, you know, there should be a general respect, whether it's members of the public coming in, or our boards, the way that they, um, administer their meetings, and just the relations between employees and-
I, I understand that. I, I think my question is, there's other policies, too, that, I mean, this is the one that, I don't know if it's a catalyst of what's been going on, but it, it just seems odd that this, everybody's gonna take it now, where it's fifteen months ago, but there's other ones like the sexual abuse or, uh, the discrimination policy, and this is coming up now. I think I'd just gently, respectfully ask if we could have this discussion, because if this is a response to something, I'd rather have a bigger discussion.
It's not.
It's not. It's just a continuation of the trainer.
This is different than the last time we discussed, where it was on an Excel spreadsheet when it was gonna be rolled out.
But Jim, this policy specifically relates to boards and committees, where the others do not mention that in the policy. So, for example, as selectmen, you sign a selectman policy book that applies just to selectmen. This code of conduct civility policy is the policy that relates to boards and committees.
And I understand, but this was signed in June of two thousand and seventeen.
Right.
And the discussions we had was, it was, this was not gonna happen this way, it was gonna happen a different way, according to the program that we had discussed earlier. So I'm wondering if this is a reaction to something and we're jumping on this-
No.
Rather than having a broader look at all that stuff.
Actually, my recollection was that we were gonna do it. We're gonna do it in September, October, and, uh, August and September.
When boards-
This was presented to us by the, by the original presentation in June. It was gonna take three months. That was, that's what we discussed at this board.
Right, but boards and committees weren't, weren't convening, um, in June, July, August.
We had negotiated with all the different boards, uh, with all the different employees at that time as well, so we've already, we've gone through that process already.
We just finalized this policy with all of our boards through our, I mean, all of our employees, with collective bargaining as well.
That's the reason why it was delayed. It took longer because of that reason.
So this will be boards or this will be employees, too?
This one is boards and employees.
Employees.
Okay, it's boards and employees.
The department had gone through the training in April, and then, um, because boards and committees really specifically don't meet in, a lot in June, July, August, and they change over after town meetings, so different members, um, and our trainer had, um, September, October dates available, so we've had these all-
So are there any other policies that all of the committees, um, elected and appointed have to take the training publicly on a camera?
The ethics is one that-
Ethics has always been there, but other, any other, that, well, ethics is a state requirement. Is there any other local town bio, committee, I'm sorry, policy that we've enacted that we're requiring everyone to do, and if not, have you looked at the other ones?
'Cause there's two or three that come to mind. And again, I'm wondering if this is a reaction to something that's going on.
No.
Oddly, that-
We, we had planned to do this.
The email that I got today was a surprise.
It, it is, I mean, saying all of us have full-time jobs, it is really short notice. Um, there's so much going on in September, like, I'm already a little panicky about which of the four I'm gonna make.
We, um, we had surveyed a couple of people and, um-
That's why we're gonna televise this, so we can even provide it.
So if we don't make one of those-
We had a huge response to, today, to the September twelfth training, so, I mean, if there's people that can't do them, we're gonna have that film available, and, um-
Make it easier for everyone.
We also have some dates for late October that the trainer gave us, but we were holding them, because rather than dilute all the training, we'd rather have four robust groups, um, right now.
We, we talked about this months ago.
And that's what surprised me, 'cause months ago-
Months ago, in terms of this, in terms of this timetable for this training.
Oh, yeah, but, but that's what we're talking about, months ago. I don't recall it being brought up, that it's every single committee member, in the way that this is being rolled out now.
Are you opposed to the way it's being rolled out?
I'm opposed that we're picking this one while there's other ones that are out there, and I'm wondering if this is because of what the, the stuff that's going on right now.
No, this one is the only policy that has language that says it applies to boards and committees.
And there's no other policy-
So you brought up social media, for example?
Yeah.
Social media applies to employees of the town.
So why, so we signed it. I just joined.
No, well, you-
Yeah.
No, you signed, did you sign an internet use policy? Is that the reason?
I signed, so, no, I signed a social, I read and signed the social media policy.
Right.
So does that apply to us or no, to boards? 'Cause I brought, I, I asked that question recently.
No, it's an employee policy.
Okay, so I asked that. Bill and I talked about that recently, that I thought that was a good one for boards to be trained on.
We're certainly, you know-
And I signed that, me joining, I read that, I read every policy, I signed them, and I thought it applied to boards, and that's why some of the questions that I brought up to Bill.
You have in your selectmen's policy book some specific policies, and, and it was brought up to us by legal counsel, that we should include social media for the selectmen in that policy book, so that's something we should revisit.
Okay.
'Cause that, your book has not been updated in a very long time.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a really long time.
Like, your selectman code of conduct-
That's my point. I'm, I'm wondering, 'cause of all the discussions that we've had, this is coming up now, but I know there are other ones that, why aren't we doing that? So you're asking me if I'm opposed to this. I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah.
But I'm an advocate that we look at all of the policies and make sure we're not just jumping on one.
Yeah, we're, we're not saying this one out. It's just the way, it's just the way it rolled out, but, but your point is fine. I don't have a problem with, with looking at all of them, because-
We'd be happy to expand any policy to any group.
Because they're good policies. I mean, and, and if we can apply them more broadly than we have, that doesn't hurt us.
In my previous town, the, uh, anti-harassment policy was given to all board and committee members, um-
And, and that's my point. I mean, we signed off on this in June of two thou- so it's fifteen months, and we're getting it on the discussion table now, and it's, it's come up more than three or four times.
We've done, we did training in April for department-
For this, for the code of conduct?
Yeah, we, we've done it for the, the department head levels and, and for the employees, and we're, we're doing it more with employees, too, but then, don't forget that the reason why we couldn't roll it out, uh, we signed it, that's just the first step in the process, so, 'cause we didn't have to negotiate it with all the union contracts and make sure that everybody accepts it, so that we can then, and then, we, we, it took a while to get through that process, so it took us longer to get to where we wanted to be with, with actually doing formal training with everybody, but, so now, it's a process to, you know, just because we approve, doesn't mean we can't, um, you know, it, it, it goes through another process beyond that. So that's, that's where we're at. I mean, it's just the timing of that, but, um, you know, and, but we're certainly open to looking at other ones. I don't, I don't have an objection to that at all.
Yeah, I think we should, I mean-
Personnel board's gonna be meeting again in the fall and, um-
Objection at all.
You know, that, we can look at that as, um, we have legal counsel at that meeting, so we can look at that expansion. I mean, now that we have this vehicle of board and committees where we can email stuff to people-
Right.
It's really good. It's gonna be done in a very archaic way. It's to be very paper-oriented.
Mm-hmm.
So we could, um, we can schedule trainings and roll out in this way now.
The better we can do it, the better for, for everybody.
And obviously, it's very complicated. I mean, look how long it took to come to cable, so with you leaving and all the momentum that's built, you know, I know you're gonna have, obviously, a lot to, to pick up. I know I've kind of voiced my, you know, HR concerns and union negotiations, there's a lot that goes into that, it's very complicated, so.
So, so I'm actually, uh, very happy, when we discussed, uh, earlier today, that my job's gonna be posted, because I feel like I'm spread so thin, because I've actually spent the last-
We're like-
-two months-
Signings.
Doing union negotiations, doing recruiting, um, doing-
He's learning it all.
Policies, doing all the stuff. I've been integrally involved in this, to the point where we need a, a VSO, because I'm doing both, and it's like day, night, et cetera. So, you know, I'm not, we're fully leaving, you know, I'm ready. I don't have all her experience-
Right.
But I am gaining her knowledge and, uh, and the hands-on stuff. I mean, she's a great trainer and I, and I'm, I'm picking this stuff up. It's not starting tomorrow. It started, you know, it started back, um, as soon as it was announced.
And the collective bargaining stuff, I've, I've been doing it for-
We've been spending lots of time, anyone who's been at meetings with us, we've been doing it all together. Today, we spent time on, uh, civil service, which was in education.
And I've been doing contracts for twenty years, so it, so that, that part, I'll continue to work with Mike on.
But Mike was an active participant in the library negotiations, and, um, it was a good experience, and we'll continue. We have more meetings to go.
Mm-hmm.
So, yep, that's, um, that was all that I had, I believe, and, um, I was gonna just mention that Mike has been great to work with, to transition with.
Alright, anything else?
Make a motion?
Alright, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second. Anybody have any discussion on that?
All in favor?
Alright, everybody.